Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to call for a motion for the opening of the public business meeting. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Second, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor. Eight to zero in favor of opening the public business meeting. The student commissioner votes on that. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and request a presentation of colors from the JROTC of Forest Park High School. Please stand.
Care read, color. Color guard, vote. Left, face. Present, arms. Ma'am, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Alonso Blue of Forest Park Senior High School, Army, JROTC, requesting to post the colors, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Order, arms. Color guard, vote. Present, arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under our nation, under our individual, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Colors, post.
Ready, cut.
I'd like to thank the members and acknowledge the members of the JROTC from Forest Park. Cadet Inanda Sheehan, Cadet Cory Butts, Cadet Brittany Levy, Cadet Ziera Taylor, Cadet Alonso Blue, and Cadet Keon Edwards. Thank you very much for their presentation. I'd now like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the prior open meeting. Moved by Commissioner Berkeley. Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor. Commissioners Penya, McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, and Robertson. Motion passes eight to zero. I'd like to have a motion to approve the summaries from the prior closed meeting session. Moved by Commissioner Hassan, second. Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, and Richardson. Motion passes seven to zero. We will now have some, a couple of board committee reports. A number of the committees didn't meet. The weather kind of messed us up a little bit. But we do have a report from the Policy Committee. Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy met on March 20th to hear the long awaited and well-received police policy proposal. The Policy Committee would like to recognize the work of Mr. Clark, of Chief Hamm, of Joe, of the team, as well as all of the citizens that came out for the last two years to give their input on this very, very important policy as we move forward. The information on the policy specifically is available online. It's quite a large document, but we will be hearing first reader of that policy. I wish I, I'm looking to AJ who's in Texas. Sometime coming up. So there will be public time to weigh in again on that. On April 17th, we will be having our next policy meeting. And again, remind you that we do have public comment at the policy meetings. You are welcome to sign up in the Thursday through Monday in advance of that meeting, where we will be talking about policy GBI, Staff Political Activities. We're going to look at that in tandem with policy JJL, which is Student Political Activities in Schools, and then the Long Range Financial Planning Policy Approach. So I welcome everyone to join us in that. Again, thanking people for their participation in the school police policy process.
Terrific. None of the other committees have met since the last meeting, so we will not have any other reports. And then at the end of the meeting, I'll remind people of when the next public meetings are. Just a couple things for Board Chair comments. First, it is with pride that we congratulate student board member Ashley Penya on not only her admission to the University of Maryland College Park, but she has a full ride scholarship.
Thank you. Our work pays off, guys.
So the other piece of board business is, at the last meeting, we discussed whether or not the board did want to have a kind of a Baltimore-specific resolution on school safety. The Council of Great City Schools reached out to all of its member districts and was asking districts if they wanted to have a statement, a resolution. It's not policy, it's just sort of an affirming statement about our beliefs. At the time, we said that we had appreciated the leadership taken by our BTU in saying that they were not supportive of arming teachers in schools, and that we felt like our resolution could align with that. We said there would be a three-part process. Last time, the board agreed, yes, we want to do this. It's been posted to Board Docs for everybody to see, the draft, thanks to the Dewana and AJ from the Board Office for drafting this. For people in the public, like I said, it was posted and you could easily review it, but it does acknowledge, it gives a lot of statistics about things that have happened in schools over the last 10, 15 years. And it, let me just, just to hit the high points, then there's a lot of whereas and be it resolved. There's a number of things in there, again, I encourage you to review it, but there's a number of things in there that calls on the Congress and the President of the United States to limit assault weapons. I don't want to misspeak here. Actually, our resolution requests a ban on use of assault weapons in large-capacity cartridges, require the strengthening of universal background checks, causing the President to charge all of his agencies with reducing the number of gun-related injuries and deaths. It affirmatively says that we are opposed to arming teachers.
You want to say that? Sure. Supporting research investigating the impacts and effects of gun violence.
Yeah, I'm just trying to go in order here. No, that's okay. Appropriately fund increase in school counselors, mental health staff, allows this, provides adequate funds for school districts to plan and coordinate school security efforts with local law enforcement officials, and to make alterations to buildings where necessary. And there's the collective data necessary to track, monitor, and understand and prevent gun violence. So that's the, those are the key points in there. We want to acknowledge the work just completed by our, not only our delegation, but the members of the state legislature in passing a number of measures around school safety. We won't have a full report. It just ended last, at midnight, so at the next board meeting, we'll have a report on the legislative, you know, the results of the legislative session. But what I'd like to do now is ask if any board members have any comments, questions, suggested revisions to the draft as presented. Tanisha is going to record them. Those will be incorporated into a final draft that we'll vote on at the next meeting. So I want to just, I want to open it for comment, discussion, suggestion.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. On the line where it says, "Whereas many schools lack the mental health counselors, psychologists, and social workers they need to identify and work with students showing warning signs for depression and violence," I'm asking the group to consider changing the language to say, "Whereas many schools lack the mental health counselors, psychologists, and social workers they need to identify and work with students showing warning signs of depression, other mental illnesses, and/or violence."
Okay, that's more comprehensive. Other comments, questions? Okay. And obviously, in public comment, if people have things they want to say to us about that, that would be welcome. And then we will incorporate that change in anything we hear from other people, and we'll vote on this at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you. Last for me is I just want to acknowledge the gift of $2,000 to the Athletic Department at Benjamin Franklin High School at Masonville Cove, Masonville Cove, from Hello World. So thank you for that. I'd now like to ask for a motion to approve the Personnel, Employment, and Payroll Agenda. Motion from Commissioner Richardson. Second by Commissioner Canham. All in favor. Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes seven to nothing. We've approved the PEP Agenda. And I now like to turn it over to Dr. Santelis for her comments.
Excuse me. Thank you, Board Chair Kashani. Tonight, what I would like to do is be able to recognize some of our young people here in city schools. And I think the combination of young people that we are recognizing this evening really speaks to the power of the blueprint, of what happens when young people have access to a broad array of enrichment activities and things that actually allow them to show more of who they are beyond just the classroom, in the same way that our, the way that Commissioner Penya, while we all now know that she is an amazing scholar, as recognized by the University of Maryland, we also know that she has an incredibly powerful and important voice within student government and on this board. And she is emblematic in a lot of ways of a lot of young people in Baltimore City. So, with great pleasure, we will first recognize some of our young people. And I want to begin tonight by congratulating student athletes from two of our boys' basketball teams on an outstanding achievement. Last month, city schools' boys' basketball teams won state championship titles in three of the four MPSSAA divisions. So first, I would like to recognize Head Coach Herman Tree. Harried, could you wave at me?
No, I want to speak right now. He's in Portland, Oregon, representing the district. He's coaching in the Knights of Summers game.
Awesome, awesome. We couldn't ask for more. So we're glad that you're here representing. And the Lake Clifton Lakers, because y'all like good of a cheer or a power. Woo! Who defeated North Carolina to win the state championship in Class 2A. And this is the fifth state championship in schools' history. Very good. Congratulations. I'm going to come with you.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Emma. You guys did good. You guys did good. Good job. Thanks for making us proud.
Y'all did well. That's great.
So can we take a picture? Is that all right? It's just a mom?
Oh, no. Well, team mom.
Oh, yeah. You're a team mom. And then we have Principal Brusher here as well, so we thank you for taking a quick picture. Come on, take a picture.
This will be wild.
Okay, okay, okay. Some people come in the middle. There's some tall ones, they can go in the back.
There's tall ones in the back. Look, they're tall.
She's a point guard. She is a, she coaches basketball. I don't know. She's got, it wouldn't count.
Right here, let's get everybody.
All right. Hold that back.
Come over to me right there. Hold that back there. Just a little bit. One, two, three.
Any texts?
Thank you. You're welcome.
And again, I will say, if you all didn't hear me, it was nice to be in a group where I'm just average or short.
Yeah, me too.
That was good.
Me too.
That was good.
I like being in a group where I'm short.
And again, thank you all for making us proud. So now, it just goes to show the power of athletics, and that athletics is more than just, more than just a game. It is a way of developing character. It is a way for our young people to show their variety of talents, particularly for those like myself who are not talented this way. I have a definite sincere appreciation. And so next, I'd like to give a big welcome to Head Coach Cyrus Jones and the Dunbar Poets, who defeated Fairmont High School to win the state championship in Class 1A for a record 16 state championships in Dunbar's history. Woo!
It's a certain size of the school. What's your category?
It's school population. I think it's somewhere high 800s and low 900s, somewhere up in there.
So below 1,000 is 1A?
Yes, definitely below 1,000.
That's the class, 1A. You compete against all schools that are below 1,000? Is that how it works?
It's only in the state playoffs.
Oh, got you. Got you. Congrats.
Well, we are proud Dunbar Poets. Thank you. We did it all. This is beat up by everybody in the state.
All right. So great.
Now, here comes Polly.
I did, 8 years old until junior high.
Now, I will say again, thank you to the Dunbar Poets. We had also planned to honor the Polly basketball team this evening, who defeated Milford Mill High School to win their second state championship in a row in Class 3A. Unfortunately, the team was unable to join us tonight, so we will honor them at a future meeting. Finally, let's see. Well, we already, so that you know, Ashley, we already said our kudos to you.
We can congratulate her again.
Sure. This is round three. Good. Congratulations again, Ashley. But I also want everyone to know that we will be honoring all of our scholarship winners at an upcoming board meeting, but I, but of course, we couldn't wait till night because Ashley's close to us on a regular basis. Now, what's so interesting is not only did Baltimore City young people dominate in the area of basketball, but just showing the diversity of young people we have, we also dominate in the area of chess. And so I want to congratulate also in order to the three teams of city school students who represented the Baltimore Kids Chess League at the USCF National K-9 Chess Championships in Atlanta this past weekend. All three of these teams are returning to Baltimore City with hard-earned team trophies. So Roland Park Elementary Middle took sixth place in the U-1,000 section out of 36 teams. Baltimore Montessori Public Charter tied for ninth, and Mount Washington Elementary Middle finished 18th out of 44 teams. In addition, two of our students earned individual trophies. Adam Pennington, a 7th grader at Baltimore Montessori, tied for fourth place in a section of 286 players nationally. And Alan Gushmond, an 8th grader at Mount Washington, tied for 10th place out of 230 players. So the Baltimore Kids Chess League had the best results at the Nationals of any scholastic chess program from the state of Maryland. We will be honoring these teams at an upcoming board meeting, but I wanted to share the good news right away. Coach sent me literally little pictures and photographs from the championships with the young people, but I think that it is definitely worthwhile for us to give them a round of applause, as again, Baltimore City students did an amazing job representing And I'm also happy to report that at our last board meeting, we received a brief presentation from Katie Bisby of Donors Choose. And if you remember, Donors Choose was the organization where city schools' teachers, along with teachers across the country, can post projects for donors who want to support education in classrooms across the country, and particularly in Baltimore City. And as it turns out, our timing could not have been better, because over spring break, every single classroom project request on donorchoice.org was funded by Ripple, a San Francisco-based technology company. As a result, 109 teachers in city schools had their projects funded at a total value of $129,469 in a single moment. Congratulations, yes, we can, congratulations to every teacher who had a classroom project funded, and a big thank you to Ripple and Donors Choose. If any teacher is interested in posting a new classroom project, I bet we will have an onslaught now. Now is the perfect time to get started. Sign up for your account at donorchoose.org/teachers. So good luck, and thanks again to Donors Choose. And then finally, I think that athletics is definitely one of our themes this evening, and it provides a real benefit to our school, students, and communities. Again, as I noted earlier, it encourages physical fitness, but also character development and teamwork. So it is now my pleasure to welcome Abby Marco, Executive Director of Squashwise, and Tavante, did I say your name right? Tavante Dupont, who is an 8th grade student at Kip Harmony Academy, who will introduce us to a program that aligns beautifully with our blueprint goal of student wholeness. And I'd like to welcome Abby and Tavante for a brief presentation.
I see. Okay. Thank you. I'm actually going to let Tavante introduce Squashwise first, because he knows it inside and out. He's there almost every day.
Hello, my name is Tavante Dupont. I have been a part of Squashwise for three years now, and besides everything, the actual program is fantastic. I've had a lot of academic and sports connections made. I have been through a lot of tournaments for Squashwise, and I've had a lot of opportunities to meet new things. So Squashwise is a program in Baltimore City that allows students after school to go to Meadow Mill Athletic Club in order to try out a new sport called squash. We, Squashwise, gives a lot of mentoring opportunities and tournaments and just basically new ideas to people. I, over this, over this summer, am going to a program called TAFT in Connecticut, and I will be taking college classes. I'll be taking biology, public speaking, and math, like AP, AP-level math classes. I am attending Poly University, I'm, oof.
Almost.
I'm going Poly High School next year. I'm going into the Ingenuity Program within Poly, and that's pretty much it.
Great. Thank you. So I think we should, I'd like to get this part out of the way first, because the truth is that not everybody knows what squash is. I mean, who's really ever heard of squash? It's a racket sport, very similar to racquetball or indoor tennis without a net, is how our students like to describe it. You play with a small ball that doesn't bounce very high, so you have to be really fast, and it's a really good heart-healthy sport. It was rated number one heart-healthy sport for a number of years now. And it's a sport that none of our students had ever heard of. Had you heard of squash before?
No, not until they came to the school.
Yeah, so none of them, I mean, most people haven't heard of squash, and none of our students haven't heard of squash. And we use it as a platform to introduce a very long-term, broad, and deep program of academic enrichment, preparation for post-secondary success, and just general development into, developing into athletes. We take a lot of students who may not have competed in sports programs before. We like to talk about, we serve kind of a pool of athletes and non-traditional athletes, so students who might not have tried out for the basketball team and become state champs, but now can compete all across the country and even around the world. We've had, we've sent a student, a student to London one year for a camp. So I'm a squash player from life, from growing up, and it introduced me to so many opportunities, educational opportunities, and life opportunities, friends, and networks. And that's what Squashwise does, is introduces that whole network to our students from Baltimore City Schools. So, I mean, I have a presentation here, but really, we're saying it all. What I'm so inspired by is when I, when I heard you present about the blueprint earlier this fall, I just felt so aligned with the, with the whole concept of the whole student approach and social-emotional learning. And we do all of that at Squashwise. So our pillars, our three core pillars, education, squash, and fitness, and wellness, and support. In fact, we even have a full-time school counselor, a trained school counselor on our staff, who focuses on college readiness, career exposure, and social-emotional support to our students. We follow our students even after they graduate from high school, through, with a commitment is to support them through age 25. So we have a counselor who works with our alumni as well, helping them with FAFSA renewals. And we even provide a small scholarship of up to $1,000 for our college-enrolled students to help them with those hidden costs of college education that can really be the barrier to students succeeding in college. And I just, I saw so many parallels to really the way that sports can open up those types of opportunities in what you've presented with the blueprint. So I just, I feel like there's a lot of alignment there. Real fast, I don't have any time here. We serve 87 students. We recruit right now from
We like to talk about, uh, we, we serve kind of a pool of athletes and non-traditional athletes, so students who might not have tried out for the basketball team uh and become state champs, but now can compete all across the country and even around the world. We've had, we've sent student, a student to London one year for a, for a camp. So um, I'm a squash player from, from life, from growing up, and it introduced me to so many opportunities, educational opportunities and life opportunities, friends and networks. And that's what Squashwise does, is introduces this, that whole network to our students from, from Baltimore City schools. So um, I mean, I'm, I have a presentation here, but really, we're, we're saying it all. So I, what I'm so inspired by is when I, when I heard you present about the blueprint earlier this fall, I just felt so aligned with the, with the whole concept of the whole student approach and social-emotional learning. And we do all of that at Squashwise. So our pillars, our three core pillars, education, squash and fitness and wellness and support. In fact, we even have a full-time school counselor, a trained school counselor on our staff um who focuses on college readiness, career exposure, and um social-emotional support to our students. We follow our students um even after they graduate from high school through, where the commitment is to support them through age twenty-five. So we have a counselor who works with our alumni as well, helping them with FAFSA renewals. And um, we even provide a small scholarship of up to a thousand dollars for our college-enrolled students to help them with those hidden costs of college education that can really be the barrier to uh students succeeding in college. And I just, I, I saw so many parallels to really the way that sports can open up those types of opportunities in what you've presented with the blueprint. So um, I, I just, I feel like there's a lot of alignment there. Um, real fast, I don't have any time here. Um, we serve eighty-seven students. Um, we recruit right now from Kip, although we have hopes and aspirations to expand in the future, which I'll talk about at the end. Um, like I said, students don't have to be athletes. They don't have to know anything about squash. They don't have to be straight-A students or straight-F students to be part of the program. We're just looking for aspiration and ambition. Um, of the students that are, that remain in our program, all of them graduate from high school. Um, eighty-six percent have matriculated to college. All, all in Maryland right now. We have one student who's a plebe at the Naval Academy. She's not playing squash, but she's fencing, which is, has a lot of crossover to squash. Um, and a few students at McDaniel, UMBC, University of Baltimore, and the community colleges. Um, our middle school students are constantly outperforming their peers at school in, in grades. Um, and we visit just dozens of colleges um across the years, which is really exciting. And I'll just leave you with, um, our vision for the future is to be able to expand to more students and schools. We, for a long time, have been hunting for a site for, uh, to establish a Squashwise Youth Center, whether it's in partnership with a university or striking out our, on our own or in partnership with schools. Um, we are um inspired by our peer programs in other cities. There's actually nineteen programs that do the same thing as Squashwise in cities across the country, and six of them have established their own facilities, um, where they have their own dedicated squash courts that they can then rent out to other schools and universities for use. Um, and it just really provides a home that we're all really looking for here for our students, and Tavante would be excited to have. So um, that's Squashwise. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you. Does the board have any questions? Thank you. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Cannon.
I, I just want to say kudos. I'm a Meadow Mill. I've gone to Meadow Mill for years, and I'm a squash player myself, and so I want to take you on at some point. I need to, I need to, I need to work out a little bit more before I'm ready for you. But I've actually seen when, uh, I know, I'm just, I'm gonna run from him now. I'm not gonna give him my email or phone number. But um, I was there when you guys had just started out and had a early conversation with Doug Hoffberger about what it would take to do this, and just the commitment and sticking with it, and seeing the Squashwise van drive around um and picking up kids and dropping them off. And just like the follow-up and the follow-through, just should be commended and thanked you because it really pays off. And I just really appreciate all the work that you've done.
Thank you so much. I should say we're celebrating our tenth anniversary this fall, so ten years.
Happy anniversary.
Great. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. And uh, before you go, um, one of the things, and I will tell you, Tavante, I actually used to teach a summer program at the Taft School. So that says a lot that you are ready for that rigor. Um, and then, secondly, I would say I had the opportunity last night to be at um, with Commissioner Berkeley and I, attended Ingenuity's, what was the name of it again? Thank you. It was their Idea Summit. And I want you to know, I can already see you, like they were last night, up presenting um their projects in mathematics and science. And it just goes to show um that really well-rounded young people um really excel um in the classroom as well when we acknowledge these other, these other aspects of them. And I, just as a true confession, I tried squash, didn't make it. So that says a lot about you. And so in recognition, uh, Tavante, for your dedication to academic excellence, leadership, and athletics, Baltimore City Public Schools and the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners are pleased to recognize you for your participation in Squashwise.
Thank you.
So I will say the next time you read, be it in a paper, on a blog, or someone's tweet, about what people think our young people cannot do, or are not capable of, or do not deserve, I want you to think of the young people that we honored and recognized this evening. Our young people in Baltimore City deserve rich athletics, rich sports, rich um artistic opportunities, and scholastic endeavors. And when they are developed early and consistently, they excel to the levels that young people in every community do. And so, before I turn it back over fully to Chair Kashani, I would like to um ask Chief Grant Skinner to the table for tonight, this evening's pep agenda. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Dr. Santelisace. We have two appointments this evening. Um, first, Julian Vincent, currently Director of Operations and Central Office Staffing and Administration in DC Public Schools, is appointed Special Assistant to the Chief of Schools effective April sixteenth. And second, Cleo Hirsch, currently Teaching Assistant and Educational Policy Consultant at Columbia Law School Center for Public Research and Leadership, is appointed Special Assistant to the Chief of Staff effective June seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. And with that, I will turn it back over to Chair Kashani.
Great, thanks. Um, so what we're gonna do now, before we open for public comment, is we're gonna do a review of the consent agenda. So I'll read the various items for vote in addition to the procurement items. Board members flag anything they would like to pull and the reasons they want to pull it. Staff will have a chance to gather information, and we'll come back to it later in the eve, later in the evening. First item on consent is the new BTU contract. Any questions to pull? Okay. Uh, second item is the feasibility study for Calverton Elementary Middle School. I would actually like to pull that and ask a couple of questions about the selection of, of the Option 3A over Option, over Option Four. I, I think, I find these feasibility study documents to be incredibly well-written and thorough and clear and helpful. The pros, the cons. They're really great documents. I just, when I got to the punchline at the end, I just had a few questions on the, on the choice of 3A over Four. So I'd like to pull that. Item eight-point-zero-three, PolicyDDA Grant Reporting, Second Reader. Um, item eight-point-zero-four, PolicyGBCA Compensation, Second Reader. Okay. Item eight-point-zero-five, Lindhurst Elementary Middle School Renaming Request. Okay. Um, we have a number of procurement items. Um, it looks like a lot. No, actually, that's not what it means. It's not a done deal. The way we, way this works, we, that just means the board didn't have questions. We don't vote on it until we have public comment. After public comment, we re-ask the board if, based on public comment, they have any additional questions. That's exactly why we changed this. You're welcome. Procurement items, item ten, I think a number of these went before the Operations Committee, but other members might still have questions? So this is wrong? Thank you. Thank you. I wondered about that. My bad. All right. So item ten-point-zero-one, Special Education Low-Incidence Teachers. Commissioner Hassan?
I request that we pull that also in tandem with um the next one, simply to have a conversation about the external contracting of faculty and staff versus internal hiring.
Yep. Great. So that we'll pull items ten-point-zero-one and ten-point-zero-two, right? Item ten-point, you can use that. Item ten-point-zero-three, Instructional Materials. Commissioner Cannon?
Yeah, I wanted just to have a, pull that and just clarify for the public when we approve these instructional materials and under a requirement contract explaining how schools have choice to choose these curriculum and how it, 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 it matches with um curriculum, the other curriculum that they, they choose to teach. So how does this, how, how does choice work? And how does, how do, you know, how, how does this, this requirement work, basically? This, the contract work?
It's a good catch from Commissioner Hassan. Normally, these would have all been reviewed in the Operations Committee, but because that meeting was canceled, this is the first time the board is seeing them. Okay. Um, okay. Item, so we'll pull all three in Section Ten, ten-point-zero-one, ten-point-zero-two, and ten-point-zero-three for questions. Item twelve-point-zero-one, Applied Technology Services, Inc., and Clary Business Machines. Okay, that'll go by consent. Um, item thirteen-point-zero-one, Priority Plus Enterprises. Item thirteen-point-zero-two, The Davy Tree Expert Company. Item ten-point-zero-three, excuse me, thirteen-point-zero-three, Towson Mechanical. Item thirteen-point-zero-four, JLN Construction Services. Item thirteen-point-zero-five, Chilmark Corporation. Yep, Commissioner.
Not a question about that one, but I have a question about thirteen-point-zero-one and thirteen-point-zero-two, and if they are related at all. I don't know if we need to pull both of them.
If you have a question.
So yes, let's.
Just, just so people know, the reason we do it this way is that we want uh the public to understand our questions and then hear the responses. So if you, if you want to say what your question is.
Pull thirteen-point-zero-one and thirteen-point-zero-two. I want to see if they, if there's any relation between the two.
Great. Got it.
And the decision with the Davy, with thirteen-point-zero-two.
Okay. Commissioner Hassan?
I don't necessarily want to pull anything, but when, in Ops, when this was coming to us, the question that I had was simply where do, we've got seven procurements coming in Section Thirteen. Where is the, like, where are we balanced as far as minority and women, the MWE, on these? So as we look at the, at the portfolio as a whole of procurement. And so I don't know if that's the time to do this in this conversation. Or is something to flag?
I mean, it's an item.
I would have flagged it at Ops.
It's an item-by-item issue.
Right. And so we don't need to necessarily pull all of them. Um, but perhaps when they come to address.
I'm not sure I understand the question, because it is an item-by-item issue.
Correct, but the entire portfolio when it comes to MWE procurements. So, so we can say.
The entire portfolio of what?
We put out all these RFPs, and we look for and prioritize businesses that are owned by minorities and women. But if they don't come out, where does that come out in the wash as far as our whole portfolio of procurements? Sort of what percentage of our total procurements are actually going to companies that need MWE requirements?
So you mean a portfolio of all procurement items on anything?
It just, it, I put it on my list for this one, to have this conversation at Ops, simply because there were seven that were relatively non, they were, you know, sort of velveta of procurements, that, you know, yeah, we, we need to reservice, okay. But, but how is this looking overall?
So you want a status report on, on, on uh.
On MWE?
On the.
And so it doesn't have to happen now? Um, but had we had the Ops meeting, that would have been the conversation I would have had there.
Just one second. So I just want to make sure we understand. So you, uh, somebody's taking that down, I assume?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, so.
Our Acting Chief of Staff is.
Oh, yeah, me? Wait, nose goes, no, no, not this time.
Commissioner Bondima?
My question would be, is this something that we should be holding, talking about at the Ops meeting?
Right. I say, we didn't have an Ops meeting.
Yeah, so are we approving this here, right? Even though we haven't had that lengthy discussion?
Yes, that, this, because it didn't come to Ops, we still, the, the board all had these to review. And any questions that you would have asked in Ops, you would, you just ask now. So yes, we are approve. Anything that, they're either gonna be approved by consent, or we're gonna pull them and ask questions about them and vote on them. But what Martha's asking is a separate question. For each individual item has a, there's an explanation about WBE, MBE. And there's a, so there's an explanation. Um, Martha's asking a different question, which is can we have a status report on our WBE, MBE contracting and probably compliance? That's a different question. That's not item-specific, so that doesn't require anything to be pulled.
So that would be a discussion about all of our procurement items?
For a future, for a future. That's a sort of a board request to get a report.
Okay, good.
It was much more of just a placeholder, sticking it in.
Got it. No, that's fair. I, I just didn't understand the question. Okay, so we won't pull thirteen-point-zero-five, thirteen-point-zero-six Towson Mechanical, questions on that? Thirteen-point-zero-seven BMS Cat, not mechanical, and P2 Cleaning Services. Okay, and finally, um, item fourteen-point-zero-one, International Business Machines. Okay, so just to review, um, we are gonna go by consent, I should do it in the other way. The items that we're gonna pull are the eight-point-zero-two feasibility study, items ten-point-zero-one, ten-point-zero-two, items thirteen-point-zero-one and thirteen-point-zero-two. And ten-point-zero-three, good catch. Um, so when we come back to this part of the agenda, we will start by voting on all the items that did not get pulled after we hear public comment, and we'll give board members yet another opportunity to pull an item. Um, everybody clear? Good. Okay. Um, with that, um, we are at five to six, and um, request a. Thank you very much. I guess I'd like to waive by five minutes the board policy on starting public comment at six o'clock. Moved by Commissioner Bondima, second by. By Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners Peña, McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, one, two, seven, zero, to start the public comment earlier by five minutes. I hope that's okay with everybody. You're all here. Um, okay, with that, uh, we'll start with our, what we refer to as special recognitions. Um, we'll start with our, our friend and guest from PCAB, Trish Garcia-Pilla.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners and Administrators. Um, I have actually a lot of things to say tonight. A bunch of different little things. Um, first and foremost, uh, PCAB, uh, as some of you, all of you in front of me know, some of you behind me may not know, are uh a group of volunteers that is appointed by three different bodies. The first being the CEO, the second being ACLU, and the third being Disability Rights Maryland. We have opened up the nomination process for the CEO seats that will be available. Uh, that, um, there is an application to be filled out online uh at the Baltimore City Schools website. It's baldomarsitieschools.org slash PCAB. Uh, that will go through the end of this month. Um, we are always in need of parents and community members that are willing to dedicate their time and energies towards uh the work that PCAB does. So if you are interested in dedicating your time to this work, please, please go fill out the application uh for nomination and um, and we look forward to new members and uh working together to move this, this work forward. Our next meeting, our next public meeting is April nineteenth here in the, this boardroom at six-thirty to eight-thirty. Uh, we will have the Baltimore Arts Education Initiative uh presenting their draft, I believe, of um what they are working on for, with this, with the district, um, to bring the district, uh, to, a plan to bring the district up to code with COMAR in regards to arts education, which is that every school should have art, well, visual art, media arts, theater, dance, and music. And that, and that's a Maryland state law that obviously we don't have the funding for, so, you know, we're looking forward to Kerwin fixing that. So it's something for everyone to pay attention to. Uh, and then we also have an update, a presentation from Dominic Bivins in the Office of School Enrollment and School Choice. Uh, and that's on April nineteenth. Uh, so hopefully folks can come out and, and see those two presentations. Finally, I guess, um, the two, the second reader items, obviously, we had. the two, the second reader items, obviously, we had input on long ago. The first reader item, I think it's EDG, we will be working on via email. We have not been able to work throughout the schedule, work it into a meeting presentation. So, when that happens, we work on it via email. And finally, the school safety resolution was, we had not seen that at all until it was on this agenda.
Trish, that's, yes. We didn't get, there was a lot of communication challenges with the, the email system. So, we, we didn't get it until two days ago. So, I would say, if you have comments you want to make on that, please, please submit them to the board office, because it'll be Tanisha and AJ that are going to be compiling that. We weren't keeping it from anybody.
Right, oh, no.
We literally just got it.
Well, that, it just brings to light an issue of the, being a board of, I mean, you guys know this also, however, you have an office full of support that work. We have a ten hours a week person, and we're a board, a board of, of working parents and community members. So, there are things that really, we find that we have to kind of go after, and it would be really nice to feel, and I do feel the tide turning, that, that people come and bang our door down to say, we really need your feedback on this. And hopefully that tide will stay going in that direction, that our door gets banged as opposed to us having to go after the information.
Fair enough, and I think we treated this differently than a policy, because it was a board resolution. That might have been a, a mistake that just wasn't fully thought out.
Right, right.
I'll, I'll accept responsibility for the error, but if you, if you do, you and your colleagues have comments, by all means.
Okay, great, thank you.
But you saw it, like, literally at the exact same time that you did. Because the first draft was very general. It was, like, tailored to every large city in the country, and it, it took a minute for our board office to Baltimore-ize it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Our next guest is our friend from the BTU, Cindy Soquist. Did I say that right, Cindy?
It was close. You're getting better.
Thank you.
It's Soquist.
Soquist.
Yes.
It's got a J in it, everybody, so it's not that clear.
It's very tricky. It's Swedish. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Sandalista, the members of the board. Thank you for having me. First, I would like to wish everyone happy International Equal Pay Day. Yes. The second thing I would like to bring up is that, I'm sorry?
For the people who don't know what that means, go ahead and explain it.
It is.
So, all women in the, women unite on this explanation.
Yes. The radical idea and recognition of the fact that women deserve equal pay to men, their, and their male counterparts, which is something that labor unions have been notoriously negotiating and working toward for a long time.
And the reason today is Equal Pay Day, based on current statistics, a man who had to work until December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, a woman had to keep working until April tenth, two thousand eighteen, to be paid the same amount of money. So, that's how much longer we had to work just to get what you got. So, happy day.
On a more, a more optimistic note, the BTU and District's negotiations team were able to reach a tentative agreement last month on the wager opener. The teachers voted to ratify this section of the contract, and we look forward to your passing it as well, hopefully. We are still in negotiations for the PSRP chapter and continue to press through on those. As it is April now, we know that budgets are coming to be due soon. We hope that principals will let teachers know about next year's status as soon as possible so that they can start making plans. We would love to help our members be proactive on this and are looking forward to the announcement of the transfer fair, which hasn't come out quite yet. But for those folks that are looking toward voluntary transfers or involuntary, should they be surplus, this is a, something that they are really looking forward to. We have been reminding members, non-tenured members of the May first deadline to announce their intent not to return to the district. And this is a part of COMAR and has been something that the district has requested, as they are going to start implementing this. I did want to bring up, however, that there was an issue with several teachers who transferred into the district, so they would be gaining tenure at the end of this year, and were sent that email in error. It caused a lot of panic, and it was just something that if this is going to be something that we do, a practice going forward, just to look out for those folks, because they were really stressed about it. Additionally, paraprofessionals have been told recently that they aren't allowed to apply for voluntary transfer or attend the transfer fair. This is inaccurate. It's a violation of their contract, and I just wanted to bring it to light so that we could correct the messaging on that. That is all. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Cindy. And I assume, Dr. Sandalista, that somebody in human capitals on top of these issues.
Yes, I, I, yes. Chief Grant Skinner has been giving me the signals from the back, so I know that we have minded that. But thank you for raising it.
I can't stand that.
I know, and that, that's why I was nodding, so that you knew.
No, I, I assumed that, but I wanted to check, because I think the board appreciates knowing about these things, but we also want to assume that somebody's all over it. Great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Next is our friend from CCAC. So, haven't, we haven't talked with Sheila in a while, so glad you're here, Sheila, to, to give us an update from the Special Education Citizens' Advisory Committee.
Good evening to all of us in attendance today. I am the chairperson for CCAT. My update is that we are looking to, to form a new and improved executive board. Anybody interested, you can call the CCAT office. I have one concern that I'm hearing from parents throughout the city, special ed, they're not understanding the certificate versus diploma track. I am now working close with Dr. Brooks and the special ed department to get that information to the parents and explain to them the difference. Also, the other statement I'd like to make, and I'd say it everywhere I go, that an informed parent is a parent with power. I am asking that many, anyone who know a child and a parent that's in a special ed education program in Baltimore City, please come to the CCAT meetings. We have two left this year. One is a mobile meeting, which will be held at William Massey School across from Coppin State, two thousand one Warwick Avenue. That's held May fourteenth. The last meeting will be held here, June eleventh, in this boardroom. I'm asking you to support us. I'm asking you to get the message out. We need a network so these parents will get the help that they need. I'm here for them. The educate, the special education department is here for them, but they have to be present in order to get the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Appreciate the work that you do. With that, we have other groups, recognized groups, but I don't believe anybody's here that didn't advance sign up, but just in case, the PTA Council of Baltimore City, American Federation of State County Municipal Employees, Public School Administrators and Supervisors Association, City Union of Baltimore, Associated Student Congress for Baltimore City. You're always welcome to come and make comment. I'd now like to open it up for general public comment, and we'll start with Seku Casimo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam CEO, Commissioners. Naturally, I was very disappointed with the mayor's critique of what happened in Annapolis last night. She didn't sound like she really knew what happened. Be that as it may, I have been advised that the arming of Baltimore City School Police Officers didn't pass, and I'm here to advise you that. I intend to petition the court for redress, because I find it hard to believe that all the surrounding jurisdictions can have armed police officers, but Baltimore City School Police cannot have their guns inside the school building. That sounds to me very much like a claim of a, a lack of equal protection under the law, and I'm here to advise you that you're going to be named defendants along with the legislatures down in Annapolis. I'm going to petition the court for writ of mandamus. A writ of mandamus is an order from a court to inferior government official, ordering the government official to properly fulfill their official duties or correct an abuse of discretion. In my mind, this constitutes an abuse of discretion. All of you are well aware of the fact that all the surrounding counties allow armed police officers inside the buildings. Why are we the exception? Is that not racial discrimination? I think it is, and I'm going to make that argument. So, I'm just here to let you know, put you on notice, so you can tell your joint counsel to get ready to rumble.
Just a reminder to everybody, and thanks for the heads up, Seku. A number of years ago, when this controversy about the guns in schools and the way the board, I would say mishandled the issue, and the board and the staff, we made a commitment at the time to, we had some public meetings. They were inconclusive. It was about fifty-fifty people for and against. We made a commitment at the time to, rather than just look at the issue of the arming the police officers, and Seku is right, we are the only jurisdiction, which was singled out in the legislature a number of years ago, where its officers are not armed. Every other jurisdiction in the state does. We, we made a commitment at the time to step back and take a comprehensive look at our discipline policies and our school police policy, so that we would look at the whole, the whole. We have now done that, and we are committed to restarting up some conversations about the, the issues of the police officers with guns, given everything that's happened. But we feel like we're in a better position to have that conversation as a district and as a board, given that we've spent some time and worked extensively with communities and advocates around the policy issues that are related to that issue. So, we respect people's opinion on both sides of that, but I feel like we have put ourselves in a better position to have this conversation, because we have really dug deep into all the policies. So, I just want to provide people with that reminder and that context for, for the, the way we're taking this on. So, we will not, this is not the last we'll hear about it. There will be further conversation. Ashley, or Commissioner Peña, sorry.
And also, we're continuing with the conversation. I would really like to get student voice in this opinion, because I think a lot of students have a lot to say about policemen in the schools and with having guns, so having a conversation would be really wonderful.
We haven't scheduled any of these things. It's a commitment that we made in conversations around our response to some of the state legislation. We did not want to make the same mistake that we made last time, which was to have the board take a position on an issue that we had not fully vetted with our constituents, because we made that mistake the last time, and we did not want to make that again. So, when we plan it, we will plan it in collaboration with PCAB and the Associated Student Congress and the various advocates, and we'll, we'll have those conversations again. Okay.
And by the way, you're welcome to come back and have those conversations this morning, just so you know.
Oh, that, oh, she's going to college. That means she can't stay. Dang. It's the underbelly of that. Good, good. I'd now like to invite Mark Washington and I think it's Richard McCoy. Can't quite read the spelling of the last name. Is that, did I get that right, McCoy? Is Mark here?
He's just outside. I was just talking. Yes. He's probably coming. He's outside. He's not feeling well.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Sandalista, Dr. Bondima, and members of the board. My name is Richard McCoy. I'm president of Lake Clifton Alumni Association. We are one of the many community partners of the REACH Partnership School, which is located on historic Lake Clifton campus. Under leadership of Principal James Gresham and his staff, REACH is doing fabulous things with the students at the campus. While we, the community partners of REACH, are excited about the board recognizing our great basketball team, which over the past twenty years, under the leadership of Athletic Director Herman Harid, have not only won games, but stressed academics and helped develop boys into men, we are a little disappointed at some of the aspects of the Twenty-First Century School plans for the new REACH Partnership School. We appreciate being in the early selection of years one, two, three with schools that are being rebuilt, but we have major concerns over the gym and stadium. The plans that were shown to the REACH staff and community last night, we feel there needs to be revised and revisited. While we understand that this particular school project had to be fast-tracked, we would like for the Twenty-First Century team, under the leadership of Nicole Price, to look at our concerns and see what recommendations can be made without affecting the timeline. We realize that there are many other schools that are awaiting their turn for model or replacing. We feel that concerns can be made, changes can be made, that will not add significant cost to the project. There are safety concerns with the gym, specifically capacity, seating, and locker room placement. With the stadium, we would like to see, pose the question if the current stadium could be refurbished in place of the stadium site being proposed, which would share space and scheduling with Department of Parks and Recreation.
Does anybody have any questions? And I assume you've had these conversations with the Twenty-First Century team?
Yes, last night.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to welcome Kim Trueheart.
Good evening. Three minutes is not enough. Okay. Our school police are armed, so let's be clear about the narrative. However, upon entering a building with our children, they put their weapons aside and lock them up, okay? And they are then accessible for their use. So, for us to say they're not armed is, is totally inappropriate. Emergency preparedness. I think I submitted a letter to the board in regards to that agenda item, and that there are two data points that I'd like the public to get, and one is the seventeen schools that are a little behind in their annual preparedness. What schools are we talking about? And then the other is the thirty-eight schools that do have school police assigned permanently. What are they? And I ask that that be included in the presentation. Internet safety. This is one I did not get a chance to send an email to you, but Slide five offends me in that presentation. And so, I'm hopeful that somebody here will look at Slide five in that presentation and figure out why it offends me. The mere fact that the key stakeholders are not identified as having been engaged in that conversation around internet safety, meaning the children and their parents, is absent from that presentation. BTU contract. I'd like to know the number of teachers in each of those pay categories that are charted in that presentation. That's on tonight's agenda. I mean, the slides with the salaries is good, but let us know the workforce demographics around that. The conversation around utilization of space, there are a lot of your partners who need space, and there are. space, and there are underutilized buildings that you have. When is someone going to look at engaging those partners in possibly renting space from you in those buildings that are actually underutilized, if their service to you is in fact educationally related? I think there's value in it. Squashwise is about to buy a new building or build a new building, there are lots of other folks out there who, their proximity to you would benefit our children. Lastly, some good stuff came out of the legislative session in Annapolis, and I'm thankful for that. And I'm beginning now to tell the voters of Baltimore to vote to change the distribution of casino money such that it all comes to education. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Our next, our next guest is Leonard Davis. Hello.
Thank you for letting me be heard here today. I'm here on an issue about the Lynn Hurst Elementary School name change. Actually, I find myself a little offended by people assuming that everybody knew. I noticed that there was no postings. I live right across the street from the school. There have been over 10 million people over the past 100 years that will probably went to that school. Now, I understand that there's a school closing in the community, and they want to combine the program to fit that elementary school, which is right across the street from my home. I myself found out April the 3rd, when I went to cast the vote. I found out about a vote, I was on my way to work, and one of my neighbors told me that there was some voting taking place that day. I canceled my afternoon schedule, because I work near Washington DC, I work in Lanham. I had to beat the rush hour traffic in order to make this time, and I find out, once I get there, I see a flyer, and they're telling me that this is actually the second vote that took place. Well, I didn't know about the first one. Now, it has been Lynn Hurst for almost 100 years. It's a part of my heritage. My parents, when they went to Lynn Hurst, that's where actually they met, and they were a couple of the first African-Americans to go to that school. I grew up in that community all my life, and frankly, I, I'm a little shocked, I'm taken back by a group of people, less than 300, are trying to make this decision. And I just, when I found out, I went to my community, I went to the churches in my community this weekend, nobody knew about it. I went in the village shopping centers, I checked websites. I don't know how everybody knew, because I certainly didn't, and I live right across the street from the school. I'm asking this committee to not accept this proposal the way it is, with two names on the list, there was no addresses, there's nothing there to support what they are claiming. The integrity of the people who made this vote, I would definitely question it. I prepared a whole list of pictures through the progression of Lynn Hurst Elementary since the 70s up until today, taken at random, and I would like to leave these pictures with the, with the committee, so y'all can look at them at y'all's spare time. I see my time is up, I want to thank you for being heard, and I promise you, I am not going to rest until we get this name change thing over. So I appreciate your time, and I would like to turn over some pictures throughout the history.
You can share them with Tanisha, she'll make sure that we get everything.
Okay.
Thank you, Tanisha. We'd like to welcome Katrina Armwood.
My name is Katrina Armwood, and I would like to thank Madam Chair for listening and responding to my concerns surrounding the name change of Lynn Hurst Elementary School on March 13th. Due to a discrepancy in the first voting, thank you, Madam Chair, for your directive in allowing a second opportunity for parents and community members to vote on a name change led by Nicole Price. My original complaint against 21st Century Schools was the lack of outreach and effort provided to community members when the decision was made to select and change the name of a historical landmark in our community. Listed, I have a timeline of the actual communication between us and Nicole Price and myself. On March 13th, the Chair directed that Nicole Price and I collaborate to work on selecting a new name, I mean, a process for the community to vote. On March 23rd, that was my first call from Nicole Price stating the dates of the voting. On April 2nd, that was my second call from Nicole Price responding to a social media post regarding the dates, time, and location of voting. Ms. Price mentioned the information posted on social media was incorrect, and the dates and time had not yet been confirmed by both schools. At around 5:20 PM, Nicole Price posted on my Facebook social media page the confirmed dates, times, and location of the voting. At 5:30, I received a text from Alicia Thomas confirming those same dates. The confirmed dates, times, and locations were scheduled for Wednesday, April 4th, 5:00 PM through 6:00 PM at Lynn Hurst, and Thursday, April 5th, from 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM at Roanoke Heights. Madam Chair, the same problem exists still. Such late notice interferes with a successful attempt to notify parents and community members of their opportunity to vote. With respect to 21st Century Schools' deadline for requesting a name change, we, the community, is asking that our school name remain the same, with the exception of adding the word "middle" in recognition of the upper class. Nicole Price also mentioned on my Facebook social media page that Forest Park was able to keep its name because Northwest Alumni Association decided to, decided not to explore further. I have Lynn Hurst Community Association present, Edmiston Alumni Association, Edmiston Legacy Experience, and community members are here today because we decide not to explore a name change to Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School any further. Thank you in advance for all your consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our last guest this evening is Cynthia Shaw.
My name is Cynthia Shaw, I'm the president of the Lynn Hurst Community Association. I've lived in Edmiston Village since 1977, that's 41 years. My son Brian attended Lynn Hurst Elementary School from 1979 to 1982, I think that's correct. The newly constructed Lynn Hurst School 88 is a beautiful, state-of-the-art school that our children will enjoy attending. We thank everyone who was a part of the planning and construction process. During the four years of planning the newly constructed Lynn Hurst School, homeowners, the community association parents voiced the importance of preserving the front of the original school building because of the history of the school, and how the history relates to the surrounding community and Baltimore City. Our history is important, our history is also in our name, Lynn Hurst. There was never a discussion between Lynn Hurst School and the community to rename the school until recently. The principals of both schools, 21st Century Schools' program have decided the need to create a shared identity between Lynn Hurst and Roganell students by voting on a new name for the combined school programs. We have good students and teachers in our schools, and a shared identity and teamwork will happen in many ways. There is no need to change the name of the school for that purpose. The Lynn Hurst Community Association has concerns about the 21st Century Schools' program renaming survey, I have a copy here, and the voting process. I have a list of five concerns in this letter that I have written, written, excuse me, and I'd like to give a copy to both the Chair and our CEO. I have five concerns. I know I cannot address them all, but there are too many questions unanswered, lack of transparency about the school renaming and voting process. Therefore, the Lynn Hurst Community Association concludes that the Lynn Hurst-Roganell elections vote totals are not valid. Therefore, we recommend that the new name from the 21st Century Office submitted to the Board of School Commissioners is not valid. The Lynn Hurst Community Association requests the Board of School Commissioners to vote for the proposed name Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School 88. This name reflects the history of our school and community. Lynn Hurst School was built in 1926, an educational institution that is 92 years old. In eight years, Lynn Hurst will be 100 years old. Let's keep the name, this is Edmiston Village history. Changing the name of Lynn Hurst School to a name that does not reflect the history of the school will dramatically change the very fabric of our community. Lynn Hurst School 88 was the first school in our community to hire an African-American principal, Mr. Calvin Carrington. Mr. Carrington led the school staff and students through the period of change from a Caucasian to predominantly African-American school and community. Lynn Hurst 88 School has educated many leaders in Baltimore City, to include Governor and Mayor William Schaefer, Congressman Elijah Cummings, Reverend Dante Hickman of Southern Baptist Church.
Ms. Shaw.
My time is up, I would like to leave these two
Thank you.
letters with you.
Thank you.
Lynn Hurst School 88 is important to the history of Edmiston Village, let's keep its name. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions or need additional information.
Thank you. Tanisha, can you, thanks. Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I'd, I'd like to have a motion to, well, no. Based on the conversation and presentations, are there any other items that, from the consent agenda, that any board member would like to pull for discussion? I would, I would like to pull the 8.05, the Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School renaming request, and ask Nicole to make the presentation of the two.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you.
I'm pulling it so that we can have the full presentation, and then we can vote. So, thank, thank you for your time, patience. So what I'd like to have is a motion to approve the consent agenda items that were not pulled, which, which are? Item 8.01, 8.03, 8.04, 12.01, 13.03, 13.04, 13.05, 13.06, 13.07, and 14.01. Motion to approve?
Sound moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hassan, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, motion passes on those consent agenda, agenda items, seven to zero. Now, we will go back and take in order the items that did not go by consent. Start with item 8.02, the feasibility study for Calverton Elementary Middle. And you don't need to make a full presentation, I think you can always assume that we've read your material, so this will just be for questions.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Sandalista's board members, I'm Sherri Vincent, I'm the interim executive director for the, for this 21st Century School Buildings Program. I think you had some specific questions about option four and why that was not chosen?
Yeah, I, I think that, again, the material that's presented is, you know, it's really clear. When I got, there was one thing I didn't really understand, and I just wanted you to, so we had option three, and then we had option 3A, then we had option 3A revised, then, then we had option four, and then here's the part I don't understand. So the architect recommended option 3A revised.
So...
Staff recommendation is option 3A revised. The community, it said, okay. The community agreed for option four, but then it said, however they requested, almost unanimously, an option similar to four be placed in the location of option three. So I followed the whole thing up to that sentence, and I just don't know what that means.
So option four, and Nicole will assist in this, because she would have written that piece about the community engagement.
She wrote that sentence.
But option, option four was, just so you know where that was located, would have been down directly on Braddish Avenue, and because it would have been below a very large storm drain that traverses the site, it would have forced the height of that school, of that location, to be a four-story school, and we felt that that would tower over the residential homes on the other side of Braddish. And it, it kept it very tight to the streetscape, whereas the location that we recommended in the end, option 3A revised, I'm sorry, there were so many revisions.
That's okay.
Is back off the street itself, it gave an opportunity for parking to be separated from the parking for loading, it gave opportunity to put athletic fields at the front and also at the rear of the school. It just gave us a very good sighting for the building itself.
So unless I read it wrong, and this is, I couldn't tell this either, this option requires, not unlike other construction projects, the school, the students, they have to leave the space during construction, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, but the students are already out of the building.
The building is no longer viable.
Okay. I thought, boy, am I missing something, and I was.
No.
Okay, so that's not really...
The students are in swing space now.
This, the swing space doesn't matter.
A year and a half early.
I, I knew I was missing something here.
So let me clarify that.
Yes, please.
So during the 50% feasibility study meeting, the community really liked option four, but what they were requesting is option four in the location where the building is, not where option four was located. So when we came back for 95%, we showed them something that was similar to option four, except in a location where the building currently exists. So they liked option four, but they didn't like where it was located, they wanted it where the school is. So they actually, they are getting what they requested, something like option four, but in a location where the building currently exists. but in a location where the building currently exists.
So, it really was that sentence, just, so that sentence, to be fair, wasn't clear. So, that, that's helpful. Because I just couldn't track, because it seemed like they gave up, and that didn't, that wouldn't be normal.
No.
Okay, good. Any other questions on this? Thank you, Nicole, for that. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve item eight point zero two feasibility study for Calverton Elementary Middle? Moved by Commissioner McFadden. Do I have a second? Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. I don't think you're allowed to vote on this either. Commissioners McFadden, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, and Richardson, motion passes six, zero. Nobody else go to the bathroom? We are running out of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole, you want to stay? I think you want to stay. Okay. Next, we'd like to have the presentation that, that has been teed up in the, on board docs, and I think the public has seen it, for the Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School
Good evening, Dr. Sandelisa's Chair and members of the board. My name is Nicole Price, Director of Community and Public Relations for the Twenty First Century School Buildings Program. My office helped to facilitate the process for the Lynn Hurst renaming. And I will walk you through our, sort of the background and the overall timeline for the process. So, as you know, in the Twenty First Century School Buildings Program, several schools are slated to close and then combine with other schools. Earlier, from some of the early schools, one of the things that we discovered, primarily by meeting and having focus group sessions with students, is the confusion of, over their sort of identity. So, specifically, like at John E. Howard and West Side, particularly when John E. Howard moved into the West Side Building, students would say, they refer to us as the former West Side students or the former John E. Howard students. We're confused. We're John E. Howard, but we're in the West Side Building. And so, that sort of spurred us to change our process and how we think about combining schools. So, those things start with initially focus groups with students and focus groups with parents to get a sense of their direction and what is important to them with regards to both combining the school as well as the new building, but more so about their identity and who they are when they start school together. So, the Lynn Hurst renaming, oops, was brought about just because of the reasons I said. Lynn Hurst, I mean Roganell Heights was slated to close, but it's also important to note that the, the reason Lynn Hurst building was selected had more to do with the location of the building, where students are and the demographic trends in that area. So, we could be sitting here, if there were just some shifts in where students were located, we could be sitting here having a conversation about Lynn Hurst being closed now or closing now and Roganell, and renaming Roganell Heights instead of the, where we are today. Beginning this September twenty eighteen, Roganell Heights students will join Lynn Hurst students in the newly modernized building that opened on April the fourth. So, after primarily focus groups with both parents and students, we submitted a request to, on behalf of Dr. Barnes, the principal of Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School, to the Office of Achievement Accountability on September the nineteenth, to move forward with a renaming process. That didn't necessarily mean that the school name would actually change. That request was approved and granted to move forward on September the twenty-fifth. From that, we have part of the policy, and I should note that we're operating under the old policy, not the one that was approved in January, because the request was submitted in January before the, the renaming policy changed. As a part of combining schools, another lesson learned was developing something that we call a transition committee. So, we get parents, staff, community members, and partners from both school communities to participate in what we call a transition committee. And they look at everything from, if one school celebrates Halloween different than the other. So, again, one of the things that's different, say, like Cherry Hill Elementary, uh, middle school girls have different, have classes as, just as, as their female cohort, separate from boys. So, we look at those things if schools are combining. We look at differences in visitor policies to make sure that when schools come together, there's clear direction about what will happen when they come. So, that transition committee is not just renaming, it's a list of a number of different things that could impact what happens when students come together in September twenty eighteen. Renaming, uniform colors, mascot, motto, how they implement district policies, how they celebrate students, how they celebrate holidays, whether or not one school has a particular way that they do back-to-school night. All of those things are important to students and families, and they have an expectation, if it's particularly if they've attended a school for a couple of years. So, that committee that looks at all of those things was also the committee that we went to with the, the discussion about renaming. And parents, particularly parents from Roganell Heights, were interested in changing the name. They were already feeling like their students were going to be treated like second-class citizens in Lynn Hurst, because all of the attention up until that point was on Lynn Hurst. As much as we tried to get students and families from the closing school to attend meetings at the building that's being designed, there's a hesitation, because what they, their initial reaction is to fight to keep their school open, and their energies are often focused on that. One of the reasons we changed the process to focus on students is if we start with student voice and share with parents, so for a student at name dominate at Roganell, we say, I just want a school that looks like nowadays, sharing that with her mother and other parents, say, well, maybe it's not such a bad thing to have this new building, and maybe if we participate in this process, then we can have our voices heard in that. So, they looked at all these things, and it was the focus groups of the students and parents that really spurred this conversation around creating a shared identity. So, I won't go through the entire schedule, but starting with back-to-school nights at both schools, we solicited, we did a survey to get input on potential names from that. I think there was a, a list generated of about eight names. That transition committee narrowed it down. Those names were submitted to the CEO and Chief of Staff. However, two of them were Emerson Community School and Emerson Elementary School. And over concerns, do, concerns with confusing those with Emerson High School, we went back to the drawing board. So, all of the engagement efforts which are listed in the memo submitted includes sending out a survey with the report cards, additional parent engagement, attending community association meetings, having a survey at the Emerson Village Community Library. All of those things had to be redone, because we had to regroup and go back and submit, come up with additional names. However, every month, we attend the Lynn Hurst Community Association meeting. So, they were notified as early as October about the name change. Additionally, on December the sixth, I have here a letter that we sent out highlighting all of the process, the steps that would have sent to, would have gone to anyone that signed up or participated in any Lynn Hurst, Roganell Heights, or community association meetings and signed in on our signing sheets with a legible email address. Around December the tenth, the list was-
Keep up with the slides on this. I mean, I'm following it on my computer, but I want to make sure that people can see it.
Around December the tenth, the list was finally narrowed, narrowed down from a list I'm sorry, I think, I guess I know this so well that I'm just walk, talking through it, and I don't know where I am in the slide.
I think you're on, you should be on slide-
Yes, I think it's it.
Yes.
Around December the tenth, the list was finally narrowed down, and that was shared with the Lynn Hurst Community Association at the meeting on December the eighth. We attempted to attend the Roganell Heights meeting, which was canceled. However, we continue to remain in communication with Roganell Heights. Following that, at the invitation of the Lynn Hurst Community Association, Alicia Thomas attended the Golden Age Club, which includes representatives from both Lynn Hurst and Roganell Heights, meeting on the January twenty-fifth, and that's where voting eventually took place. Students voted respectively on January seventeenth and eighteenth, Roganell First and then Lynn Hurst Heights, I'm sorry, then Lynn Hurst. And at that time, we noted that five classes at Lynn Hurst did not vote. So, an email was sent out that Friday, communicating with parent, with principals, that we will return on that Monday for the five classes that did not vote. So, all students that attended school either on the seventeenth, eighteenth, or the twenty-second at Lynn Hurst will have, provide an opportunity to vote. Majority of students voted by the, by ballot, however, the younger students pre-KK voted by show of hands. Total, we collected six hundred and seventy-four votes. And with that, Wildwood Parkway Elementary Middle School one was three hundred and six votes. The intention was to rename the school Wildwood Elementary Middle School and drop the Parkway with the votes total from three, of three hundred and six. Total, there were some other name, I know that there was some concern that other names were not suggested, but there were thirty, at least thirty-six other names that were either recommended throughout, early, from early in the process or sometime throughout the conversations primarily between October and December. So, with that, our office recommends renaming Lynn Hurst Elementary Middle School Wildwood Elementary Middle School, which would be effective July one. Based on a conversation with Councilman Burnett, who's the councilman for this district, he has agreed to put forth legislation to change the building name to match the program name. So, if the, once the board, if the board votes to approve the building, the program name change, the city council will then have to vote on the building name change. We have, as a Twenty First Century Program, held off on ordering signage for this building until a final decision is made on the name. Any questions?
Thanks, Nicole. Questions from the board? Commissioner Bondima?
Maybe I missed something. Is it, I know where Lynn Hurst is, the school is at, but is the street on Wildwood Parkway?
The school is located on Wildwood Parkway. Lynn Hurst is the street behind the school.
Right. I know exactly where it's at, so I was, okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. So, is it Wildwood Parkway or just Wildwood?
Wildwood Elementary Middle School.
Okay.
The street name is Wildwood Parkway, but it would be Wildwood Elementary Middle School.
And primarily, these votes were cast by the students?
The majority of the votes are students. There are some adults. I can certainly break those out and send them to you, how many students, how many adults, but we had close to six hundred students vote, so somewhere around five seventy, five hundred seventy students voted.
Okay, okay. And you did attend these community association meetings?
Not necessarily me personally.
But someone from your office.
Yes, someone from our office attended a community association meeting. And that was something that was established even before the renaming. So, when a school goes under construction, we make every effort for those surrounding, for those neighbors that live in the houses surrounding the, the school construction, to make sure we're staying in communication with them. So, we had regular construction meetings, so we were attending them as a construction meeting. However, October, November, and December, we were very intentional about sharing with them information about the renaming process.
So, one, one last question. I just want to be clear. So, a neighbor living across the street from the school would have gotten communication about construction?
Correct.
And then eventually, information about a renaming?
If they attend the regular construction update meetings.
If they went to the meeting.
Yes, or the Lynn Hurst Community Association meeting, or Roganell Community Association meeting.
Thank you.
If they also signed in in one of our meetings, so we have, throughout the Twenty First Century Buildings Process, we have at least a minimum of eight meetings related to planning and design. Anyone that signs in those meetings with a legible email address or phone number receives communication from our office based off of that. We have a tracking document for every single school, so I can tell you how many times a person attended a meeting, and then I can tell you how many people attended a meeting overall.
Any other questions? Motion?
All right, I want to make a motion to accept the, the renaming of Lynn Hurst to Wildwood.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Canham, second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor of the renaming recommendation. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson. Motion passes, moves to city council. I want to comment on this and follow up to Ms. Price. We do appreciate your attention to this and your commentary on this as neighbors, we do. And please don't think we don't. We are trying to be active learners of this Twenty First Century process, which turns out to be way more complicated than anybody imagined. And so, there is, while there are schools that are being built new, brand-new in neighborhoods on historic sites, there are other neighborhoods that are mourning the loss of their schools. And it's a tricky balance of, it's not even a tricky balance, it's hard to be responsive and caring for the people that feel like they're losing their, not only their historic building, but their alumni association. I mean, so there's a lot of stuff going on here. It's because of that and some of the things we learned in the first couple of rounds, Dorothy I Height, Forest Park, Northwestern, Samuel F. B. Morris and Frederick, that we've chosen to pay an awful lot of attention to the students and what it takes to combine the populations and have the students feel good about their new place. It's not intended to denigrate or not be sensitive to historic Baltimore communities. It is, it is a nod in more, in direction of hearing the students and being very sensitive to what they are going through and how they can feel like second-class citizens when they're being asked to leave their building and their familiar surroundings. I'm sure that's not a much consolation to people who are feeling differently, but it's, we did appreciate that you requested the extra time. It did give us a chance to look into it a little bit further. But on balance, we still leaned, lean in the direction towards hearing from the students.
Can I add one last piece I think is important? We are looking at ways to recognize both schools, communities, and the building. So, whether or not we named the, and this is just an example, not saying that we would go this direction, named the media center Roganell Heights and named the community space Lynn Hurst Elementary. All right, so looking at ways to ensure that we honor the history and legacy of both schools in the new building, even if the, well, with the name change.
It's not really a point of order. If you have any things else you'd like to share, please share it with the board office. We do get all of that, and it, we appreciate it. And you did help this process, and I think opened it up a little bit. Thank you. Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'm sorry. The next item that was pulled for discussion is item ten point zero one, the special education,
Good evening, Dr. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education.
Good evening, I'm Jim Patten. I'm the Director of Related Service in the Office of Special Education.
And I am Jeff Parker, Director of Procurement. Good evening.
Thank you all. My questions on these are around sort of the larger philosophical approach to hiring contract employees versus investing in a parent-to-professional-to-teacher pipeline. So, if you could just sort of talk about where we are in the state of, of hiring contractual employees? Are we looking, is it out of our realm of possibility to do this in-house, those kinds of big pieces?
So, for a special education low-incidence teachers contract, this is actually being proactive. So, this is for, this is a very, again, low-incidence population. This is for our students that have a visual impairment, for our students that may be deaf, hard-of-hearing, adaptive PE. These, this contract is for if we have a teacher that may retire mid-year, if we have a teacher that may go out on FMLA, because those teachers may already be in a contract in another district, and they're unable to come out of that contract. This is to make sure that we're still providing free, appropriate public education for our students, that we're able to fill that vacancy with a contractor for that absence at that time, for a long-term substitute position, so that we have a contracted, certified person in that vacancy at that time. So, that gives us the opportunity then to go out to recruit for someone that is highly qualified in that area. So, for instance, we may have a teacher that may retire mid-year, that's an adaptive PE teacher, so then we can contract with one of these vendors to be able to provide that service for adaptive PE for the remainder of the school year, and then be able to fill the position with a Baltimore City employee for the, for the next school year. So, this contract is actually so that we can be proactive, so that we are sure, so we can ensure that we're providing FAP for all of our students that are receiving special education services.
So, given that, it's- So given that, it seems more like this is a just-in-case we might need. So right now, percentage of stu, of special education teachers that are teaching in self-contained classrooms, that are, are employees versus contractual? It, you're making it sound as if it's sort of the, the abnormal, the...
Currently, we have no contractual employees for the low-incidence teachers. This is, we're very much trying to be proactive. Also, for orientation and mobility, there was some legislation passed recently that requires all students with a visual impairment to have an orientation and mobility assessment, and we have a, a contract with Maryland School for the Blind to do, to do that. That's only one option, and by putting this out for bid, we'll have other vendors that we can pull from if we need.
So, um, but there are unfilled teacher positions in these categories as well currently?
In special education, but not for low incidence teachers.
Not in adapted physical education?
We have one vacancy that opened mid-year that we can't fill, and that's another reason, as Dr. Brooks said, for us to have a contract just in case.
So is this going to address some of the understaffing in general of adapted physical education? Uh, we have, as, to my understanding, we have three physi, adapted physical educators to cover every student that is two years or more discrepant in gross motor skill ability?
That's not correct. Uh, for adaptive phys ed, we have a staff associate and five adaptive phys ed teachers. And in addition, at the special schools, each of our special schools has their own full-time adaptive phys ed teacher.
That's not included in that total of five?
No.
So those five are all itinerant?
They report to the principals. The, the, the first, the five that I mentioned are itinerant and they report into my office, but the other ones report directly to the principals of the special schools.
So do we have a handle on approximately how many of our students have I E Ps that require them to have adapted physical education?
Oh, absolutely.
And five, five teachers can cover that?
Yes.
Yes, for adaptive P E.
In addition, they also, we, they also are very involved in our robust Special Olympics program. We, we have things happening all year. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of May, for three days, we have a Special Olympics at Polywestern Complex.
I'm, I'm just, I'm concerned that we're not having enough teachers in schools if we look at the gross motor skills of students with special needs that are being under identified or not identified and not serviced.
Regarding the service for adaptive P E?
Correct.
So all students may not qualify for adaptive P E, but they still may qualify for additional services that address their, uh, their gross motor skills. But they may not qualify for the...
Right, but if they're discrepant in over, in two years or more. And, and I have a hard time believing with eighty-six thousand students with the, what, we're seventeen percent special needs, that there's not more than, more than five people could have the capacity to cover in a hundred buildings?
Any students who've been referred have been, have been assessed, and our model is also moving more toward, instead of the adaptive phys ed teacher, seeing each student one-on-one or in small groups, working with the phys ed teacher at the school.
Again, that, I'm just concerned that five is, might, might be a little under capacity there. Um, and then with the, with the second one is about paraprofessionals, correct?
So the second one is about our therapeutic aids.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. I want to take, I want to vote on this separately. I want to ask separate questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like, I know you pulled them separately, but I think it, it, it's a separate line of questioning, I think. Motion to approve item ten point zero one, um, special ed low-incidence teachers. Moved by Commissioner Bondima. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson. Item passes, you getting this?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. He's... Item passes seven zero? We're self-managing ourselves right now that Tanisha had to go. So now to item ten point zero two, I E P and therapeutic aids. Commissioner Hassan?
So same, similar line of questioning?
Okay, so for our I E P, um, and therapeutic aids, we do also have our par educators that are providing those supports for our students as well as contractual. And so if the contractual are, may be for those that need those more intensive, um, type of supports and have been trained specifically around those therapeutics. So it may be for students that need, uh, more direct support around, um, behavioral supports, and so they have that specific training around that. The pair, the par educators that are also providing that one-to-one support are instructional pairs. It may be supporting students in their least restrictive environment that need, uh, supports around executive functioning, that may need supports, um, around transitioning, maybe from a more restrictive environment to a least restrictive environment. Again, for all of our therapeutic aids, there is a F A P plan, and so they come back to the table. The I E P teams come back to the table to determine if the student still continues to need that level of support.
So the question is not, not about are they able to do their job or what F A P is, but are we investing in developing the human capital resources? So the, um, percentage of paraprofessionals that are contractual versus, versus staff?
So we are definitely those par professionals that are currently, that are currently instructional par educators, that yes, they, we are working with them, and those that are non-instructional, we are providing professional development and providing a pipeline so that they become, so that they can become instructional par educators and then fill these positions as well.
So do we have a sense of how many people are our employees now?
So we currently have four hundred thirty-seven internal employees that are providing these supports as one-to-ones.
And, and then the percent, how many are contractual?
And right now, currently, we have four hundred ninety-eight that are contractual.
So we're about half and half?
About half and half.
Because it really does, when you go out into schools, it really does provide a different climate and culture if the people are, are invested in staying and are being invested in.
Exactly. And actually, some of the contractual are actually going back to school so that they can become permanent employees.
So do we have a plan to shift more?
So we're working very closely with human capital so that we can look at that pipeline to be able to try to have some more internal staff. As I said, the non-instructional par educators become instructional par educators so they can provide this type of support for our students, so that we don't have to have as many contractual.
Very helpful. Um, do I have a motion to approve item point ten, item ten point zero two, I E P and therapeutic aids? Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Berkeley, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, all opposed. Commissioner Hassan, um, item passes five to one. Next item for discussion is item ten point zero three, instructional mat, instructional materials, various vendors. Commissioner Canham, you had some questions on this?
Yes, I don't know if this is for Sean. So it, it's more, so these are... I, 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 I'm sorry. I guess it's just, can you just explain how, um, this is a requirements contract. Just explain how this works, because I just want to make sure, um, we have, these are supple, instructional materials matter. The high-quality instructional materials matter, uh, for our students to make sure for lots of reasons, they get the rigor that they need and we're not, and, and, and for me, when I read this, I just need to be reminded about how schools are using it, so it's not a hodgepodge. Like, people get to pick and choose, and how do we make sure we have kind of a rigorous, coherent approach? And so I, I guess, um, maybe just talk me through these thirteen that we're, that we're, we're approving.
Before you start, can I just jump in really quick? Um, just to clarify one thing about the vendors. As I look through this list of vendors, they do not sell curriculum. These are more of like the instructional, uh, the materials. Like, so I see like math and literacy manipulatives. I see like career exploration for younger children. I see art supplies and things like that. So I just want to make sure that as all the work that we're doing on curriculum for next year, that these are not, our schools are not using these vendors here to make curricular decisions and replacement of things like that. I just wanted to clarify that.
And that could be maybe clarified. I mean, just like defining what instructional materials are, because then when I drive down and see, like, when I see Fray Scientific Company, I'm like, so what are we using? Is it, this is kind of like a, is this a science curriculum or is, are they test, test tubes?
No. They're, they're, yeah, they're not curricular materials, and I know that Jeff has even a rundown of what we have, you know, purchased from each of these vendors. And, but again, they're not curricular materials.
Okay, because when I see Lake Shore Learning, that becomes, I'm unclear about what that is. Um, some of them are clear, like art materials, but then others are not. And so maybe just a description of like when, in the future about what they, they are is, is fine with me.
Right. I mean, a majority of the purchases are associated with, uh, Lake Shore Learning as one of the vendors. Um, most of these purchases are focused on pre-K and K, some few things for like grades three. You know, s, some things around, there's also purchases for the Judy Centers for the students and stuff. So it, instructional materials kind of, that's what sort of the acronym is used, but in reality, it's more the supplemental things that a teacher would want in the classroom.
In the classroom to execute, okay.
The rugs, the learning rugs and things like that.
So Jeff, one of the things that I might recommend is that we actually use more precise language, right? So that when we talk about curriculum, right, with regards to curriculum materials, because I would argue, as the academe that I am, that even curriculum materials are not curriculum. Curriculum is what young people are expected to know when, right? And with the sequence of what is being taught. Curriculum materials are the materials, textbooks, other things that are used to support the actual curriculum. Instructional supplemental, supplemental instructional support materials, right? Include things like manipulatives, include things like counters, counting bears, and scales, and test tubes, and, and those kinds of things. So maybe to Commissioner Canham's point, maybe a way that we revise it, because I know that it's a lot. And so we try to kind of jam things in one, um, one-point area, but this represents a scope, might be helpful. And then also, what percentage of these materials are being used, um, at what grade level? So if the majority of this request, right, is pre-K K, Lake Shore Learning for Judy Centers, that's a very different discussion than Commissioner Canham looking at this. And, and quite frankly, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable question, looking at this and then saying, well, wait a minute, has Lake Shore Learning science materials now supplanted and taken the place of, right, science curriculum materials? Because let's all be honest, for those of us that have been in the classroom, you can open the Lake Shore book and order, right, science center stuff that then takes the place of the science curriculum. So I think we just need to be clearer on this, given kind of the distinctions of each. And I know sometimes I don't push on it because I realize not everybody's, um, a curriculum wonk like I am, but I think this is a great example of how we need to be more precise in the description and the language around the materials.
I had a couple, I mean, since it got pulled, I had a couple of things too. I mean, I think you should assume that most of us aren't curriculum wonks and, and that the language is, um, hard, sometimes hard. For me, or not hard, but confusing. Um, for, uh, for me, it, uh, it is helpful that you were really clear in this about the funding is from the individual school or department budgets, because that's frequently a point of confusion, so thanks for that. Um, this is a request, uh, for an increase of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's, the write-up is actually silent on, on why. Did we run out? Did we run out of all those things? I have to assume that the schools still have money in their budgets? If they can absorb another three hundred thousand dollars worth of cost?
What we're running, so the board approved an amount up to one point two million dollars, and what we're running up against is that limit.
Right. And so this is my, this is, this is my point, and I, I, I feel slow, because this is a question I frequently have. When we approved the budget that included a, a, and then you, after the budget was approved and then the team came with various con, various requests for procurement contracts, so there was a request for a one point two million dollars, um, that fit into the budget. So now it's one point five million dollars, and I'm thinking, do we, do we just have an extra three hundred thousand dollars that we could have applied to this? Does that mean something goes down by three hundred thousand dollars? There must have been a reason why it was up to one point two? I don't, I don't know. I, I don't know where that money comes from, and so that's my question. And that, because presumably, once we increase it, if they use the materials at that three hundred thousand dollar pace between March thirty-first and June thirtieth, it has to come from someplace, so I have to assume that there are, the schools that are using this have that much spending power left, and I assume that there's a way that you know that.
That is correct.
That's correct, so I actually do understand it. Okay. Okay, so then the other, the, one thing is a sort of a note to self. Um, the next time a contract comes before us that shows an end date of March thirty-first, I want to ask, why would I do that? The school year doesn't end till June. Why are we, right, so like, why, so that, I didn't catch it the first time, but why would we do that?
Well, the, the reason is, is because the agreement that we're participating with, with Anarundel County ends on March thirty-first.
So that would, that's going to be my second note to self, um, in for future. We accept as sort of God's gospel truth that these piggyback contracts are good things. Well, if Anarundel County approved it, must be good. Never asked, I've never asked if we've actually verified that they've gone through all of the, um, stringent review, questioning, bidding. Um, maybe they do, maybe they don't. We've been reading a lot of newspaper articles about some people that do, some people that don't. And I don't want us, I don't personally want to be the subject of one of those articles. So I think, um, for future, this is again, note to self, when we review piggyback contracts, I think I want to ask a few more questions, just to make sure that we're really clear that our due diligence included a review of their due diligence. It's great that it saves money and it always reads that way, but I just don't understand what's involved in that review. And I didn't ask the, when it came to us, so I, by default, why, I can't really ask now, I guess.
Well, we, we asked Anarundel County to provide us all the documentation that supports their decision, as well as their board's approval of the contract.
Great. So then the next time one of these comes, I think maybe you can either include that in the write-up or we'll pull it and, and ask for a little bit more information. I just want to make sure that we, our discussions of contracts is, is incredibly tight.
Excellent.
With that, um, do I have a motion to approve item ten point zero three, instructional materials, various vendors? Motion to approve from Commissioner Canham, second. Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, motion passes six zero. Next item that was pulled for discussion is, um, item thirteen point zero one and thirteen point zero two. I know that you linked them, Commissioner McFadden, if you don't mind taking them separate, because I have a question on one of them, but not the other one.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, the, I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at the, the similarities between the services and why we are requesting them as separate and not the same. So the tree expert certificate, both don't need to require those, or just one needs to require those?
Now, actually, in January twenty-fifth, a public solicitation went out. We received four vendors' proposals back. We gave them the opportunity in the solicitation, if they didn't meet all the requirements, they either bid on one, both, or just neither. We received back from Davie, um, they're, they met the qualifications and passed the reference checkpoints for the tree ex, um, tree removal. However, their prices for landscaping services was higher than Priority, um, Priority Plus. So we elected to take, based on low bid, and pass references checks to take the low bid for Priority Plus for the landscaping side and take the Davie side for the tree. So we separated the contract, which was in the upfront initial solicitation to award at our discretion both or to one vendor. So basically, Priority Plus didn't bid on the tree cutting because they didn't have any arborists or any tree licensed professionals. They just were, um, experts with landscaping and shrubbery removal. Davie prices for the landscaping was higher than Priority, so we took the low bids on both.
Okay. I may have another question.
I have a question. Um, I think this is just my, um, lack of understanding of how it works. The, um, waiver for the thirteen point zero one Priority Plus Enterprises, um, the waiver was granted for the, um, by the Office of Minority and Women Business Enterprise. Um, when I asked that question, I, I understand now that, um, Priority Plus is a woman-owned business. So after you got the four bids, so this is, so I understand the process. After you received the four bids and Priority Plus was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, is that the point at which the waiver was granted? Because of course they could meet the percentages, because they are a, so, yeah.
What happens with the art solicitation process, before any go on the street, there's an estimate of job, um, value of the job. That goes down to the Law Department Minority Business Office. The Brian Boone, who is the manager of compliance, he evaluates, and we do it, we do a separation of jobs, um, based on the value of the contract, and he looks for potential, uh, vendors that can supply the outsourced, and then he makes a determination whether it's going to be allowable or whatever. Like, say, this, give me an example. The landscaping contract... The landscaping contract for schools to go get beautification, to go get mulch, okay? It's hard to meet a particip MBE participation rate when you only have three hundred dollars worth of mulch delivered when you have a ratio of participation for a vendor to meet that. So basically, Jeff can probably explain it more, but it's basically based on the value of the contract, how the ratio is set.
So that's helpful, because I had the same question for thirteen one and thirteen two, and that was the answer was given for thirteen oh two. The answer I was given for thirteen oh one is it, this was waiver was granted because it's a woman owned, it's a woman-owned business.
Take, um not to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
But the uh, the contract was set as one with a separation power, so the overall contract was a zero participation waiver given. So if you look at them, they're, the whole contract as one was separated as zero. It was a waiver granted.
Thought I was understanding this until you said those last two sentences.
So when it's separated, so the, when the grass cutting, not the grass cutting, the the tree and the landscaping went out as one, based on the review of the work that was to be offered and the money that was going to be allowed in for that contract, it was determined that the minority particip minority participation would be waived.
Okay, because of this, because of the scale of the contract, so I I think that the, the answer should have been the same. It's, it has nothing to do with the fact that it's a woman-owned business.
Correct.
Okay, uh that's what I thought. Uh Commissioner McFadden, you said you might have another question? Okay. Um thank you for that, that helps me. Um I would like to have a motion to approve item thirteen point zero one for priority plus enterprises.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner McFadden. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hassan, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, item passes seven zero. Motion to approve item thirteen point zero two for tree removal. Um the company is the Davie Tree Expert Company.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner McFadden, second. Commissioner Richardson, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, item passes seven zero. Okay, that, that's it for our procurement items. Thanks, gentlemen.
I thought we were doing fourteen point zero one, will we be changing that?
No, we didn't pull fourteen point zero one. Uh did somebody have a question on fourteen?
No, I thought you called it, I didn't.
Oh, I very well could have, but I I think we voted for it the first time. And we will check the minutes, and if we made that mistake, we'll have to, we will have to correct it. Okay, well, I'll ask Tanisha to check it. Um okay, so we are, uh we have three items for information and discussion. First up is a presentation on emergency preparedness for schools.
Sorry. Good evening, I'm Alice Watson, Director of Health and Safety.
Good evening, I'm Jim Patton, the Director of Related Services in the Office of Special Education.
Good evening, I'm Chief Ham, Chief of School Police.
And we're here to talk about emergency preparedness for schools. The emergency preparedness guidelines for schools are established by the Code of Maryland Regulations, uh that sets sets forth the requirements for emergency plans and emergency planning. Its purpose is to provide emergency preparedness and response instructions, uh information and guidelines to protect the safety and well-being of students, employees, service providers, and visitors at the time of an of an emergency. It states that emergency plans must be prepared, can you, sorry? It states that emergency plans must be prepared in consultation with other health and safety officials in the local community, and that each local system shall develop an emergency plan for each public school and central administration under its jurisdiction. The plans must deal with uh the contingencies of man-made, uh technological and natural hazards, and that each public school emergency plan shall be on file in each public school system. And each public school shall develop and implement an annual schedule of drills for the school year. Baltimore City's um resource is the Critical Response and School Emergency Management Guide. It's a comprehensive uh safety planning model that provides incident management and emergency preparedness and response. This plan aligns with the Maryland State Department of Education Emergency Planning Guidelines and has required by all LEAs, local educational agencies, we are required to submit annually to Maryland, to the Maryland State Department of Education. The model is used by most schools in Maryland and across the country, and and it's adapted under the Homeland's Homeland Security FEMA um uh model. We developed the Critical Response and School Emergency Management Guide in consultation with school administrators, uh school police, and also Baltimore City's Local Office of Emergency Management. The uh the guide is reviewed annually, the guide and also the safety plan template that the school uses is reviewed annually for updates and improvements. Um each school's site-based safety plan is submitted to us for review and uploaded on a central uh database. Um a brief overview of the of the guide, which is our comprehensive safety plan, section one provides guidance for developing and implementing the comprehensive safety plan with school staff and faculty. It provides principals and school administrators the requirements for developing the plan, ensuring that they develop it with a safety team, uh being familiar with their building and grounds, um know what hazardous conditions are in and around their schools, and ensure visitor screening policies. Section two provides an interface and coordination with um with sites and the district office, police and the fire department. It helps the school to understand the different level of emergencies that's communicated by way of media or with other local responders, the level one, level two, and level three emergencies. Uh section three provides guidance to doing the um emergency response protocols such as the drills. It provides the schools with um how to carry out each of the drills that they have to do. Uh section four provides schools with um health and safety risk management pro protocols, which um is for site-specific emergencies or or significant disruptions that may occur in the school, such as floods, outages, hazardous spills, electrical outages. The emergency drill requirements and monitoring um are communicate are communicated to schools each year. At the beginning of the school, before school starts, we start communicating with principals and and school administrators as to what the requirements are, what the mandates are, and what they have to do before uh students return, and especially within the first thirty days. Uh communication is provided by way of several leadership action updates and by way of uh emails. Monitoring is performed monthly via a online recording process. Uh this year, we implemented for the first time an online module where principals and school administrators have to populate when they complete each drill, and we monitor it monthly. We provide the updates to school supports and the principals along the way. Site visits are conducted um to assist principals where needed. Schools that um are subject to falling behind on their drills, we send them alerts and warning and warning notices if necessary. Um the requirement for doing the the fire drills, depending on whether the school has automatic sprinkler systems, if the school has automatic sprinkler systems, the requirement for fire drill is five per year. If not, schools that do not have automatic sprinkler systems, they must complete five fire drills per year. Um as of the April third report update, a hundred fifty-
Could you just repeat, I I think you just, could you just repeat that one more time? If you have sprinkler systems, how many you do, and if you don't, how many?
Five.
And if you have?
And if you, if you do not, the requirement is eight.
Oh, got you, thank you.
Forty-nine schools have automatic sprinkler systems. The April third um update um indicated that twenty-one schools may be behind. It doesn't mean that they have not done any drills, it's just that as of the April third report, they have not entered any verification of conducting the fire drills. Um all all schools have com have 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 conducted fire drills, however. The the six emergency drills, schools are also required to do six emergency drills per year, but only one of each according to the current guidelines. One lockdown, one evacuation, one reverse evacuation, one shelter in place, one severe weather, and one drop cover and hold. As with the fire drills, um as of this update, seventeen schools did not record whether or not they had conducted an emergency drill. Um recent communication to principals indicated that they, that most of them have done the drills, they have just not entered verification of doing the drills. Planning for the two thousand eighteen school year, we will meet with principals and school administrators during the uh chief academic officer's summer leadership training um to them. We will provide training on the safety plan development, um talk about any new regulations or guidelines that may come about, uh help them with conducting and recording the drills. We would like to integrate in their back-to-school annual calendar set drill schedules for the for the academic school year, and we will continue to monitor and provide support as needed during the school year.
Just to update you, uh we are, uh I just had two of my FOMS instructors that to complete Alice training, that's active shooter training, they went to train a trainer. It was paid for by the Maryland Center for School Safety. So now they will be able to teach our officers along with students and uh staff, and they will be able to certify them as being trained in Alice. Currently, Alice is the top training for active shooter response. They've trained over a million people. They're not, they're not only performing training for schools, they also do it for businesses, hospitals, churches, and other organizations. And they even have a curriculum for students um as early as elementary school on uh not being afraid when something happens. Um so uh we're gonna, we're gonna start to roll that out, we're gonna roll it out with our officers first, even though we are already currently, every Friday, we're doing active shooter training with Baltimore City Police. Uh right now, uh in a, one of our, one of our vacant schools, uh we train a couple of officers uh weekly, and this training has been going on for the last couple of years. Um but I'm happy that we'll be able to train staff now on and students on how to respond, and not just us in the police department. Uh also, our patrol areas are broken down into into seven geographical areas, we call them sectors. Each sector uh has four mobile units that can provide support to schools that have either unarmed officers during the day or no officer at all. So we already have a coordinated response, and we're already working with the police department. We've had several threats um since the Florida shooting um that we've investigated. Uh we're working very closely with the police department. The commissioner has given us access to some of their systems, so we can monitor social media, uh we can monitor threats, we can investigate threats, and we work with their criminal intelligence unit. So they even come out if we get a threat. Uh we just had a threat this morning um at one of our schools, and it was unfounded. After we investigated it, we found out that it was a false allegation, uh but uh we got a threat this morning, so it's something that we're used to dealing with, we have been dealing with it. Um the good thing, I'm I'm not going to say nothing is ever going to happen, but the good thing is, the relationship that we have with our kids, they're telling adults, and they're telling the right people, and we're able to get in front of a lot of these threats that we receive.
Could you just say that one more time, please, Chief? That last little piece?
Yes, ma'am. Because of the relationships that we have with our students, our kids want to be safe, so they're telling responsible adults. It may not be us, but the responsible adults are bringing that information to us, and we're getting it quickly, not only from students, from parents, uh from social media sources, uh from the police department. Uh when we get these threats, we're able to get in front of them, and the good thing is, all of them have been unfounded. Uh uh the only other thing I wanted to add, uh from the Alice training, we were doing alert training before Alice training, so there's also another component uh of active shooter training that our officers have had, so it's just going to add on to what we're doing right now.
Also, if I can add, since the events in Florida, we've had a substantial uptick in the number of students with suicidal ideation who have sought out responsible adults, but it's been such an increase that we actually changed one of our recent professional developments for all of our social workers to be a refresher on suicide prevention.
In the event of a school or building crisis, um communication is managed to provide clear, concise, and frequent updates to the school community. To minimize confusion and rumors, information is uh shared only when confirmed, and communication efforts are coordinated to ensure a consistent messaging. Uh parents and guardians are updated through appropriate channels, uh phone, text, the email, school websites, and social media. All media inquiries are handled by uh by the communications team.
My office coordinates and deploys our crisis response teams when there's an emergency. The typical reasons for us deploying a team are sudden death of a staff member, death of a student, community violence, or community unrest. To give you an idea, last year in school year si- uh twenty sixteen seventeen, we responded to sixty emergencies uh with with crisis teams. Crisis teams range from making sure the assigned mental health clinicians at a particular school are there to work with the administrator and the team at the school to respond to the crisis, to a team, one of our largest teams, our largest team last year was eleven responders. And um we had, the the most crisis teams we've deployed in one day has been eleven, and it was in response to a fire where several of our of our students were killed last year. And we just, we deployed eleven different crisis teams. Could I have the next slide? So the coordinated mental health support of the crisis team are the school social workers and school psychologists that come from my office. In addition, we reach out to the Office of Schools, and us, uh school support liaisons are involved in response as well, uh and the uh school counselors in the Office of College and Career Readiness, if they're assigned to that particular school, uh they they report, and as do the expanded school mental health clinicians, if they have one who is assigned to that school, knows the students, knows the climate. Uh in addition, we work very closely, I'm sorry, Chief, I left you off, we work very closely with school police with these, and the school administrator is really key. And typically, what we do is uh respond, have the team report fifteen to thirty minutes before bell time to the principal, and they they determine what their their approach is going to be for how to respond to the crisis. Also, we work, we also work closely when we need to, especially for, really for staff issues with the Office of Human Capital, if the employee assistance program needs to
Comments, questions? Commissioner Hassan, then Commissioner Canham?
Could you go back quickly to, I believe it's slide seven?
Seven, you talk about the twenty-one and the seventeen?
Um there's, there's a list, there we go. Um and it says six emergency exercises, one per school year. I just want to clarify that it's one of each of those.
Yes, yes, presently, there is.
Um in case someone is out there watching.
And Commissioner, can I add something to that? With the reverse evacuation, those are shootings that happen in schools, and we get those all the time. Um so uh we actually-
Wait, say that again, shootings that happen in schools?
Near schools.
Oh, near schools, I thought you said-
And they, we we were calling them lockdowns, but they're actually called reverse evacuations, and we we get those all the time.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because if somebody just happened to read that quickly, they might. The other question that I have is, if you're doing professional development for the development of emergency management plans, that leads us to believe there might not be some in place. So by what timeline should every parent expect their school, is it, you know- So by what timeline should every parent expect their school, is it, you know, November first? Every school will have a plan, you know, is, what's, what's that deadline that parents would know?
By opening day, every school will have a-
So they're getting the training in August, and they're gonna have their plans written by August, or by-
Yes, but verification is given to the state in September. So we're working with the schools from, from school prep during summer readiness up through when the final verifications are due to the state. Because we, we are accepting and reviewing, and sometimes going back and forth with the principals to make any edits.
That's a tough time for principals to get that done.
Commissioner Canham?
Thanks, I, I got a series of questions. So kinda building on that, this is one of my questions, it says, each school's safety plan is uploaded to a central office database, so are you saying that there is a database now with a plan uploader, or that's, that's what's gonna come by?
Yes, it is.
So, and do we have a hundred percent-
It has been.
And we have a hundred percent compliance with that?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a hundred percent compliance, but there's twenty-one that don't have fire drills.
We were talking, the, the site-based safety plans are separate from the, from the drills.
Never mind. I got it. No, my bad.
Okay, I, I wanna go back to what Commissioner Hassan was just talking about on slide seven. So, I, I just wanna be clear, so each one of these things, are we do separate, we do separate drills on each one of these things, or are some of them together? I mean, I have to be honest, if I was a school principal and I had eight fire drills I had to do, 'cause only forty-nine of our people, forty-nine of our schools have sprinkler systems, and I have to do one, two, three, another, I mean, it's, that's a lot of drills.
Yes, yes, they have to do separate drills for each one.
Okay.
I mean, you're exactly right.
I'm just worried, you know, how do we do it so it's not cutting down instructional time?
It does cut instructional time, right? That is the, you know, that is the tension that we're gonna feel. That's fourteen if you don't have a sprinkler system, right, that you have to do. That's almost every two weeks, right? We've all been in schools, right, fourteen is a lot, and there's a lot of tension around this. So, you know, principals have been having to plan appropriately. Alice and I have gotten a lot of feedback about, like, when people are actually planning their drills to really try to get this down well. So I know principals are being very planful around it, but it is, it is a lot. Yeah, okay.
I, anyway, I know, I, I, I did, I did not know that. I want our kids obviously to be safe, and I want it to be trained, I did not know most of our kids are having fourteen drills, and I also worry that they feel, you know, that they're in a state of perpetual danger when they're really not. But I know we have to be preventative as well, so.
Yes.
I'll leave that to Mr. Davis to figure out.
Let's talk about changing the guidelines, but nothing has been implemented at this time. The state fire marshal is communicating with the state superintendent about amending the drill requirements, but so far, nothing has been put forward.
I'm, I'm gonna keep going. So can we say that all, at this point, all of our schools have had an active, active shooter training? Like, I know how to deal if an active shooter came into a building, that they've been trained in a drill and how to respond to that? Do we have, have all of our principals been trained, or whomever trained to be able to, and our kid, our students have had a drill on that? 'Cause I know I've talked to some principals who have done that, but I'm not sure how many. Maybe that's a John Davis question, or a-
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the lockdown drill, which is, which is our active shooter drill, is one of the higher-performing drills that schools have done.
We've been emphasizing that. Yes, we've been emphasizing the lockdown drills, based on recent events, right? And so, yes, they've got six of those to do, but, you know, it's good to know that they, that that's the one that's probably been done the most so far.
And do they log it some way to, like, is there like a database where you're logging, they're logging it in some way?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, on the new online verification module.
You, you do have an online verification module?
Yes, yes, we are getting schools to.
That, that's, that's really helpful. My last question was, can we just go to the number of officers? So, I, I thought that was very, Commissioner Ham, really helpful, the way you talked about the sectors and the mobile units that we can actively respond, but I thought we had more officers. We have a total of seventy-six officers now? You have thirty-eight permanently assigned officers and twenty-eight, oh, mobile units? So there, there's obviously more in a unit?
Yes, it's, it's four units, it's, it's the, the schools have broken down to seven areas with four mobile units in each area, and the officers are assigned to thirty-eight schools, but we also have officers assigned to the e, to nights and evenings as well that handle the burglaries at night, and handle the after-school events, activities, children left behind, and all, all those kinds of things that happen, like, between dismissal time and seven o'clock athletic events, things of that nature.
So how many officers per mobile unit?
One, it's, it's one officer per mobile unit.
So it is only six.
So it's twenty-eight, it's twenty-eight mobile units that respond to calls.
We have seventy, yeah.
Sixty-eight, yeah. Six, sixty-six.
Sixty-six, so we have sixty-six officers.
No, we have a hundred-three-
That's what I thought.
Slots, but we have some vacancies, yeah. We have some vacancies right now.
What would the total be, Chief, just to help distinguish, what would the total be if all of the officer positions that you currently have within your department were filled?
It would be a hundred-three.
It'd be a hundred and three.
Oh, my goodness, I never knew that, and we have-
No, it's-
No, it's not forty vacancies. No, this, this is just speaking to who's assigned to schools during the day.
Yeah, this is a shift issue.
This is, this is, this is schools during the day, but we have a three-thirty to eleven-thirty shift, and then eleven-thirty to seven-thirty shift.
Oh.
The three-thirty to eleven-thirty shift handles the late dismissals, they handle the major hubs with, 'cause you know, it's, it's major hubs like Mar-Domin, where seven thousand kids are coming through there between three and five. We got officers that are deployed downtown because of students, you know, that are transitioning through downtown, that have relationships with the kids.
This has been a total education, so like, during the school hours?
Right.
When kids, when our, our youth are in, in school, there are sixty-six people-
No, thirty-eight schools have offices, but there are some schools that have more than one. So I apologize for that. Like, Patterson has two. Uh, Mervo has two.
Yeah.
Uh, there's two at the Lake Clifton campus, one on the east side, one on the east side. So, there's more than thirty-eight offices working during the day, it's just the larger schools, especially the high schools, have multiple offices. And I'm sorry, I wasn't clear with that, but that's-
No, it's okay, it just-
I can't give you a number off the top of my head, but-
Basically, like, I go, we made, we actually have done a pairing down. Officers are covering our schools, and this was very illustrative to me because I, you know, I just assumed the same number of people are working in, in the evenings, but that's not, you can't, you gotta work eight to ten hours a day, and so, so, so we're spreading out that group.
The majority of our forces are assigned to schools right now. I can get that number to you, but we do have, it's more than thirty-eight.
It would seem that a table-
Yeah.
A, a, as a follow-up item would be a table of the existing officers.
I, we have a deployment chart that I can send to you.
Right, we've seen it in the past, this is just a refresher.
That tells you each school, how many officers are assigned to each one.
It, it's just fresh on our mind, it's like, how are we covering the schools and really being able to understand that? It would be really helpful.
Okay.
Thanks.
Terrific, no, it's, it's great, it's a, it's a good refresher, 'cause we haven't seen it, and there's several new board members who have never seen it. Other questions for, for our team?
The deployment?
We should, we should, yeah, yeah.
It has been-
Yeah, but I think the refresher, so, I, I don't, yes. But, so this table that we want should be posted someplace where everybody can see it.
Yeah, it's actually on the website.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we had a, a board op, what do you call it, board operations meeting, where, where it was, it was given out on a, on a update.
So we just have to remember the date of that?
Right.
So, it's pub, it's posted on a-
It's on the website.
On a recent operations committee meeting?
Not, I don't know if it's, it's the recent one, but there was a committee meeting where we had a, we did a PowerPoint, we said, we did the deployment plan.
Yes.
And we talked about how many officers were gonna be assigned to schools and mobile.
Okay, we'll find it. Good. Commissioner Berkeley?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Ditto. Okay, awesome, thanks. Next up is item eighteen point zero-two, policy EGD, internet safety slash acceptable use of technology, this is the first. Uh, no, it's eighteen point zero-two, the, am I wrong? The, I, I think it's- Then what's eighteen point zero-two?
Well, we just-
Oh, we skipped, the legislative update was on there, and they changed the numbering. So, I was given an updated sheet, but it's the same on the public site, so we'll go by the public site. Okay, so item eighteen point zero-three, the legislative update's gonna be done at the next meeting, sorry. Okay, gentlemen, sorry about that.
Good evening, my name is Armstrong Carvin, I'm the special assistant to the chief technology officer.
Good evening, my name is Elvis Tia, director of IT infrastructure and security.
So what we'll be presenting tonight for first reader is what we call an AUP, it's an acceptable use of technology. In our district, it's the policy that guides how users in the district interact with their laptops and other districts' technology. A little bit of background on this, the AUP has been a policy for a while, and the reason that we're revisiting the policy to do this proposed update is to basically provide a little bit more clarity around personally identifiable information, what we're gonna refer to as PII. And also in light of districts across the country being targeted through different cyber attacks, we felt it necessary to include in the policy the expectation from users as to how they should interact, or when they encounter any type of cyber intrusion into our, our technologies or our systems or email. A few related things to the policy as it exists, the policy references FERPER. Also, there is board policy EHB, which is our data records and retention policy, and also policy KDA, which is, which governs access to public records. We're only highlighting those things because how you use our technology kinda touches some of these existing policies that are already adopted. So some of the challenges with the existing policy is that it did not necessarily clarify explicitly what personally identifiable information is in actual policy in regards to teachers and students. And also, it did not necessarily address how users should interact with any suspicious emails or security vulnerabilities they encounter while using our technology. So we thought this was a, a good time to actually, you know, include this in the policy as we move forward. We have done some community stakeholder engagement, and these are the organizations and we, we've met with to discuss the policy and seek input. The changes that we're making to the policy are again in two areas, we're explicitly defining what PII is, that change is actually presented, it's a four-page policy in section three, under the conduct and use section of the policy, where defining what PII is in the policy. And also, I'm, I'm just gonna read this, where basically stated that users must not reveal PII in district communications or while they're using districts' technology, not through email, not through websites, or any other public profile pages that users of districts' technology may have, it could be a blog, it could be a YouTube station or something like that. The district also has currently an opt-out process with regards to students, if we're gonna post any pictures using districts' technology on blogs or on Facebook or social media, there's an opt-out process that currently exists in the district as to, so that those students who opt out of those types of disclosure should not be, their information, their publicly available information should not, their personally identifiable information should not be posted publicly using districts' technology. So we wanted to identify that to tie it in with the district's existing process. Here we're outlining what some, what we consider PII, these are just examples of what we consider PII, for instance, social security numbers, driver's license number, religious preference, date of birth, credit card, debit card information, those are things that we consider PII, and we're saying that you should not include in your communication while using districts' technology. In the second part of section three, where included in the policy, language that, that addresses vulnerabilities, any type of phishing hack, any type of Trojan, any type of virus, any type of abnormality that a user of districts' technology may encounter, we're basically outlining how and what the expectation is for users to report those abnormalities that they may encounter to district office personnel in the IT department. Now we're stating that our informa, the information or the vulnerability should be reported to the service desk, and that number, email, and contact information is actually listed on the district office's directory. We're also explicitly stating that users must not open, download, demonstrate the vulnerability to other users in an attempt to stave off the spreading of these types of vulnerabilities. In addition to that, we are also trying to be a little bit proactive, so we're offering some training, some tools, and we're developing an awareness strategy to help all users better identify what some of these vulnerabilities may look like. So we've developed efficient spam email awareness training that is available to all district users of our technology on our Blackboard learning platform. All users of district technology, staff members, I should say, are required to already take what we call a digital awareness training, and that training must be taken in order for users to have full access to the internet. Before you take that training, a firewall would limit you to actually what you can and cannot see while using a district laptop. In addition to that, now, we are also developing a proper use of email training course, so users could understand how to encrypt email if they wanna send some sensitive information, and also how to appropriately use email so they understand the types of PII that should not be included in an email or any type of public communication. We plan on communicating this update of the policy by posting it onto city schools inside, including it in an LAU. The district technology officer has an option to blast that out as well, and the final policy will be posted on board docs once completed.
Questions, comments? I have a question, I, I'm gonna agree with Ms. Trueheart, looking at page five, and the community stakeholder engagement, and I'm really conspicuous by their absence of our young people. We're talking about, you know, use of technology, and I would argue that they should be engaged in this. And teachers.
We actually did meet with the teaching and learning committee, there was a group of teachers who actually were part of that engagement. But students is a, something that we may have missed on this.
So when you, so say, say more about the, your engagement with the teaching and learning office and how teachers were engaged in that?
So, the teaching and learning-
You were saying beyond the, the professionals at North Avenue, there was actually a group of teachers that were engaged in this conversation?
Yes, so the teaching and learning committee actually invited us to one of their meetings, and in that meeting, there were several school teachers. And we attended that meeting, we gave a presentation, they actually gave us a lot of good feedback that we incorporated into the, the policy.
The teachers at the meeting?
Is this when they change their time?
Because that-
No, I think he's using teaching and learning committee.
Yeah, because-
I'm sorry, it's not the, not the public committee, the teaching and learning office specifically has a-
Has a group, has a subgroup of teachers, like, people that are deployed in the classroom, not, I'm getting a nod over here, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Do you have like a group of teachers that, like, comes in and gives something back on?
Teacher advisor group, yes.
There you go, that's helpful, I just, yeah, we are- There you go, that's helpful, I just, yeah, we are conflating the two, I was anyway. Um, so I, I, please add students.
Okay.
We're not, it, it's, you know, we should probably, just as a general proposition, have a, a good reason to not ask students about things. So by default, I think we should almost always ask students about things.
Okay, and I also heard PCAB as well?
Parents, uh, yeah, I mean, but that, this is a big issue for parents, huge, so I would definitely add PCAB to this.
Yeah, I think just as a general rule, just as a suggestion, a general rule is that if internal offices are considered stakeholder groups, that's a flag. Right, so a general kind of rule, of course, is if, if you are going to have a slide, and I, and I'm not trying to read Ms. Trueheart's mind because it's far too deep for me to even try to read. But I would just advise that, you know, if, if you have a slide that's entitled Community Stakeholder Engagement, that you wanna be sure that the groups, the individuals listed on that, um, actually extend beyond just, um, the offices here at North Avenue, regardless of who they say they represent, right? So even in working with PCAB, um, PCAB is a parent arm, parent run, right? It is an extension of parent. So I think just, my guidance is an overall rule, is that if you look at a slide and you're saying stakeholder engagement and it's all offices of people that you work with every day, it's the clue that it's probably not sufficient stakeholder engagement.
Understood.
And even if Kim wouldn't erase it, I, I, the, the lack of students on, sort of technology was just a huge flag.
Just, Mr. Hassan? Just for the record, I did, um, really try and recruit and engage students in the process. I encouraged social studies teachers to, to reach out to me. I encouraged student participation at the policy committee meeting, and I did that for two meetings in a row in advance of this policy specifically. So, so we're do, we're trying to get it, we just haven't gotten any, any kids coming yet, so, great.
And thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, appreciate that. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, last but certainly not least, um, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Oh, and just for the record, I, well, before you guys are setting up, um, I just scrolled back, um, through, Kim's not here right now. I just scrolled back through, uh, where is she? Where'd she go, Trueheart, is she still here? Oh, she moved, okay. I just scrolled back, the, um, it's for general interest, 'cause we were curious about it too. The last school police updated an operations committee meeting, unless I missed something, was up, March twenty first, two thousand seventeen, which is, like, exactly a year ago, and it, it would definitely be time to update the numbers. And it did include da, it did include numbers, but it didn't, the kinda table, I think we're just looking for, if we have X officers, Y are here, Z are there, and vacancies are the other, you know, something simple. And I, and if, that somehow pub, post it perfectly, 'cause I think it is a general interest.
So I will just say this, so that we are completely straightforward, we are also checking on, um, advice of both council and, um, safety to make sure that we are not, um, transgressing any safety protocols by wide publication of what, with the deployment of school.
Fair enough.
So I, I do want to go on record as saying that that is not a given, and we need to make sure we're keeping our kids safe in terms of distribution of information.
So let me revise the requests, uh, within boundaries that are necessary for students' safety. Um, it just, uh, some information that, that we could be brought up to date, because it was a, a year ago and we saw it and, so.
No, 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 I, I think we can update, I just wanted the public to know, we're not gonna totally post, um, because we need to verify, um, that we're doing it in a way that keeps kids safe and isn't basically communicating out what our safety plan is for those who would seek to possibly do harm.
Fair enough.
I just wanna make sure we balance protection and transparency.
Good evening, my name is Shane Hall, I am, uh, Director of Research here at City Schools.
Good evening, I'm Tony Webb, Program E evaluator.
This evening, we will be presenting to you an overview of the twenty seventeen National Assessment of Educational Progress, or NAEP, results. The results were released, uh, from embargo at twelve oh one this morning by the National Center for Educational Statistics and the National Assessment Governing Board, which, uh, released the results, um, today in, uh, two separate webcasts. So this evening, we're going to show you the results for Baltimore City.
So it would be important for this one to, 'cause it's a twenty-eight page presentation, to definitely hit the highlights, we don't need you to read the slides to us?
We will, okay.
No, it's cool, just, just flagging it.
Thank you. Uh, NAEP, also known as the Nation's Report Card, uh, it's given every two years, so around twenty seventeen, uh, results. We're gonna show you the results, uh, for Baltimore City, well, as well as, uh, for national public schools, uh, large city districts, and some results for the state. Uh, results are available, uh, as mentioned, for, not only for all the states, but for the twenty-seven districts that are part of the Trial Urban District Assessment, or TUDA program. City Schools has been part of TUDA since two thousand and nine. Uh, this year, there were five new TUDA districts and one returning. Uh, Milwaukee rejoined TUDA after being gone in twenty fifteen, and the new districts were, uh, Clark County, Nevada, which is Vegas, Denver, Hillsborough County, North Carolina, Shelby County, Tennessee, which is Memphis, and Fort Worth, Texas. Uh, you'll also see results for the large city group, now that's just public school systems in cities with populations of over, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand or more. One important, uh, change to, uh, this year's NAEP, uh, is the digitally-based assessments. We know that today's students are digital learners and communicators, and NAEP sought to acknowledge that with the transition in twenty seventeen away from the traditional, uh, paper and pencil format to a digitally-based assessment without compromising the comparability of results across years. So as part of this transition, they strove to keep mode effects to a minimum. For the reading tests, nearly all items were successfully adapted from the paper to the digital format. So items were nearly identical across the two test formats. In math, most of the items were successfully adapted. Uh, so there was a lot of planning took place over the years, uh, in preparation for this transition. Uh, digital assessments are, of course, not a new thing here in city schools. Uh, we've participated in digitally-based assessments really since twenty fifteen, when most grades started taking the PARC assessment by computer. Uh, since then, nearly all grades take PAR, PARC by computer, and in, and in addition, students also take the online eye-ready assessment. So, uh, our district has been actively participating in digital assessments.
When looking at our results, um, comparing twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen for reading and math across both grade levels, fourth and eighth grade, our grades, our scores remained steady, there was not any significant increase or decrease. However, when we look at the larger picture, when we look at how City Schools compares to the state of Maryland, national public in many large cities, we are still trailing those. Um, and when we also looked at our scores in reference to the twenty-seven other TUDA districts, we were near the bottom half. Where we are making progress is when we look at the inclusion rates for our eighth grade reading. We had the largest increase in the nation, we had a five percent, um, increase. When you look at our subgroups, the ones that we normally compare, race and ethnicity, gender, student with disabilities, and also our economic, economically disadvantaged students, we still have work to do, there are still significant gaps that exist within those groups.
Wanna start with a long-term view that shows average, uh, scale scores in reading for grades four and eight, between two thousand nine, the year we joined TUDA, and twenty seventeen, the most recent year. Uh, the tables at the top of these slides summarize just the raw, uh, point changes since twenty fifteen and since two thousand nine. Uh, just for the benefit of everyone here, NAEP tests are scaled from zero to five hundred. In reading, a scale score of two thirty-eight is the minimum score for proficiency in grade four. In grade eight, the minimum score for proficiency is two eighty-one. Now, you'll notice of the categories here for comparison, not only City Schools, but also large city, national public, and the state of Maryland, you're going to see that no category, no jurisdiction here had an average scale score equal to or greater than the cut score for proficiency in either grade. Now, what this really does is this underscores the rigor of NAEP. I wanna emphasize, this is not a basic skills test, it also is not tied to any particular curriculum or in particular set of standards. Many, uh, many education researchers regard it as kind of a truth teller. Overall, you'll see, in our cases, a lot of flat results. Uh, you will see a dip between twenty thirteen and twenty fifteen. The twenty fifteen results, we had a decrease in both grade four and eight reading, as did the state. That also was the same time, we also had large increases in inclusion. Uh, inclusion of special education and English learners. I mean, there are a number of factors, uh, involved when you have declines like that, but that is one that, uh, that stood out.
The takeaway from fourth and eighth grade math scores for Baltimore City is that, again, there has been no change. We have remained, um, steady in our scale scores from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen. The, um, proficiency scores, cut scores for math are different. In order to be considered proficient, for fourth grade math, you need a score of at least two hundred and forty-nine. The scale score for proficiency for eighth grade math is two hundred and ninety-nine. And the math scores essentially echo what the reading scores were, that none of our comparison groups, none of those groups, including us, are meeting the level of proficiency.
And we have a table in the appendix that summarizes the, uh, cut scores for each achievement level, basic, proficient, and advanced. And that's, can be found in the appendix. Here, we're taking another view of, uh, reading results for twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, looking in terms of, uh, proficiency levels. The percentage of students scoring at or above proficient. You see comparison for City Schools, for Maryland, for large city, and for national public. And really, between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, the trend here among urban schools and statewide is no real significant changes, with the only exception being in grade eight reading, where national public showed a small but statistically significant increase in the proportion of students proficient in grade eight reading.
And those trends are exactly what we see when we look at math, um, eighth grade and fourth grade math. City Schools has remained flat. If you look at the state of Maryland, large city, there have been no significant increases or dis, decreases in a percentage of students who are scoring at least, um, proficient or advanced. The only significant, um, increase was among national public for eighth grade math.
Earlier, uh, we alluded to inclusion rates. Uh, the National Assessment Governing Board, or NAGB, adopted guidelines in twenty ten to reduce variation in exclusion rates for students with disabilities and English learners to ensure NAEP is representative. And only students who participate in their state alternative assessment may be excluded from NAEP testing. Others should participate with or without allowed accommodations. Uh, from two thousand nine to twenty thirteen, as you can see here in this chart, up in those trend lines at the top, uh, City Schools had lower inclusion rates, uh, of students with disabilities and EL students, which reduced the overall inclusion rates illustrated by those trend lines in, on this slide. In twenty fifteen, however, it had one of the nation's largest, highest increases in inclusion rates, as did the state. Uh, mostly among students with disabilities, uh, as the EL population not been large enough in the sample. Uh, but here you see the, um, from two thousand nine to twenty seventeen, the, uh, proficiency rates, as well at the same time, the, uh, changes in inclusion over the years. And as you'll see, between twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, we saw large increases in inclusion. And between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, we also had another very large increase in inclusion in grade eight reading. To where now our inclusion rates in reading are now more in line with those of, of, uh, large city with national public. And the state's, uh, rates have climbed as well.
For math, since twenty thirteen, the inclusion rates for eighth, um, fourth grade, as well as eighth grade math, have been close to a hundred percent. Um, since looking at twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, there has been no significant change in the number, in a percentage of students considered to be proficient. The next eight slides, and we'll try to just hit the high points of them, we'll look at the average scale scores, math and reading among our, the various subgroups. We have race, ethnicity, gender, economic disadvantage, as well as students with disabilities. When you, um, look at this chart, what you should pay close attention to, again, is that when you look at the subgroups, our subgroups are not meeting the, uh, minimum proficiency level. There has been, um, an increase in the average scale scores for the district's white students. From twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, when, when you're looking at African American and our Hispanic, Latino population, the, um, scale scores have declined, even though that has not been a significant decline. And this is, um, also a similar trend when you're looking at math scores by race and ethnicity for fourth and eighth grade. We are not meeting the minimum proficiency level yet. Um, the scores among our white students are increasing, but you will notice there were, has been some decrease among our African American, as well as our Hispanic and Latino populations.
And with, uh, these slides, as with the others, what you're seeing are average scale scores by these, uh, various subgroups. Uh, here, we're looking at results by gender, uh, with the all-student results, uh, also shown as, uh, kind of a point of reference. Uh, in contrast to the large gaps you saw between our ra, largest racial and ethnic subgroups, uh, by gender, we saw much smaller, uh, gaps, uh, between male and female students, uh, in grade four and grade eight, uh, reading. And a similar story in, in math, uh, ver, very small, in some case, almost no, uh, no gap, uh, performance gap in average scale scores between male and female students in math. No, only by, uh, gender. Here, we're looking.
We have a que, I'm sorry, we have a question?
Okay.
Shane, do we have a crosswalk of breakdown by gender and race and ethnicity?
Not on this, but that could be done.
Okay.
In fact, it's one thing, we have a written update, will be our next deliverable for the Teaching and Learning Committee on May, May first, and we'll have some more of those, uh, cross-tabulations.
And when we reviewed. No, yeah, and when we reviewed as staff, the data, we also have some cross-sections, um, of data that aren't, this is just the overview. So that if the Teaching and Learning Committee in particular has requests for different slices of the data, if you let us know in advance, we can ask the team to do that and then let you know what other cuts were taken.
So, so we know, so we know that this written update has information that you want, that you want in there. These, uh, next two show reading and math, uh, scale scores by economic disadvantage status. And the main thing I wanna underscore here is that these results have to be interpreted with the most extreme caution. Because between twenty fifteen and twenty seventeen, you're looking at two different ways for measuring economic disadvantage. Twenty fifteen was the last year in which we collected free and reduced meals applications. Twenty seventeen, we went to a different, uh, now being a community eligibility provision district. That was, uh, economic disadvantage was based on direct certification plus Medicaid eligibility. So while the results show some similar, uh, things, especially similar gaps between disadvantage and non-disadvantage, I do want to caution to interpret those carefully, because they are not necessarily calculated in the same manner. Uh, these are the results for grade four and eight reading. And then here you see the same cut grades, uh, four and eight math. And honestly, when you look at it by TUDA district. And honestly, when you look at it by TUTA districts, it becomes even more difficult to interpret, because you have TUTA districts using free and reduced forms, you have some that are CEP, counting themselves as 100%, like I believe Philadelphia did. And so it be, and NAEP has not really resolved a way to make that all apples and apples.
When looking at the average scale scores for students with disabilities compared to students without disabilities for reading, again, the students' average scale score has not yet reached the minimum proficiency level. The gap between fourth grade and eighth grade varies. Like Shane said, when you get to the next slide with math, math has a little bit of a decrease. We would use caution when looking at those, because that decrease is sometimes attributed to skill, scores not increasing, but rather decreasing, as it did for our eighth grade results. For math, you'll notice that the average scale score for students without disability decreased, while the average scale score for students with disabilities increased.
These next few slides show our ranking in terms of average scale score. These rank average scale scores by TUTA districts. This is all 27 TUTA districts, but I highlighted some in particular. We highlighted those TUTA districts that we would consider demographic peers, and by that mean districts with, whose enrollment are at least 50% African American and at least 50% economically disadvantaged. So we've highlighted there Atlanta, DC, Shelby County, Tennessee, Philadelphia, Cleveland, Milwaukee, and Detroit. Here in grade four reading, we rank fourth from the bottom, ahead of Cleveland, Milwaukee, and Detroit. We have grade eight reading, and we rank third from the bottom, ahead of Cleveland and Detroit. Tanya will walk you through grade four and eight math.
All right, we're at the, near the end of the presentation. And when looking at fourth grade and math grade, fourth grade and eighth grade math skill scores by TUTA district, they are exactly the same as Shane presented in reading. For fourth grade math, we are fifth, when looking at where we rank among our demographic peers. And if you look at the eighth grade math skill scores, we are ranked sixth among our demographic peers. So eighth grade math and reading mirror each other, and fourth grade and eighth grade reading, their average scale scores, when looking by TUTA district, mirror each other.
By demographic peers, again, we're talking about those districts we highlighted and circled that have similar demographic enrollment to ours. Happy to take any further questions or comments at this time.
Peter?
I appreciate this. This is, this is very sobering to look at these results. And, and while I see them, I understand that they're flat over time, but when you look at the TUTA, and how we're, we're, we're scoring literally at the bottom of the districts and not moving, and since 2009, going down, it's, it's really hard. It just shows that we have a lot, a lot of work to do to support our teachers and our students. What would be very helpful for us as a board is to know which, over, over time, which ones of these districts have moved over time, demographic peers. What we need to know is like, get a benchmark of, you know, what's possible, of, 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 you know, I, I would like to know the, 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 the TUTA districts, who, what, what has their movement been over time? And then what you, what you describe as our demographic peers, the six that most match us, to see, to see just generally in fourth grade and eighth grade reading and math, you know, what are others doing? And then really under, trying to understand who has improved the most, and how can we learn from them, is what I want to get at.
I know among our demographic peers, I know in 2015, DC was rather highly touted, but their 2017 results, like most of the TUTA districts, were relatively flat. The biggest increases between 2015, 2017, I would have, I would have to check back for longer term, but I know some of the more recent increases were, I believe, San Diego and Miami-Dade.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I'm not asking you to off the top of your head, tell you, just maybe for teaching and learning, you said you're going to come back with a deeper, if you could bring that, like, so we could look at, would be great. Could you just, my, my last question is, could you just say more, because there's been a lot of national news on this idea that there was a switch to the, 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 the computer on this is the, so this was the first NAEP that was done on computer? And are we, are people saying that the scores are not as valid because of the move? I just want to, I, there's been national articles on that, that I've been reading, and I just want to get your perspective on it.
The digitally-based assessments, they first piloted in 2015, where 80% of students tested on paper, and 20% tested digitally, using the tablet, so that was kind of the pilot. In 2017, they, that was the other way, 80% took the digitally-based assessments, 20% took the paper and pencil. However, it was, the scaling was based on the paper, so that results are comparable over time. Students were randomly assigned to either the digital or the paper format, and the results you're seeing are based on the digitally-based, based testing. So I think a lot of rigor scientifically was employed on the part of NCES and the NAEP Service and Support Center to make results valid as possible. And again, in the case of reading, nearly all of the items were successfully adapted without format changes and so on, from the, and from the paper to the digital format in reading. There were some instances where, in math, that was not possible, so with math, there might be a little more noise in the data, but for the most part, the majority of those items were successfully adapted from the paper to the digital format.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
There is, there seems to be a lot of focus on standardized testing, but why are we only taking or getting results from math and reading, and not the writing and the science exams also?
It's NAEP.
So NAEP only tests, the, only tests math and ELA formally. There are other assessments that are coming online for the state, so at the state level, there's a revamping of the state science test, and then Chief Conley.
I'm looking at the website now from, from NAEP. And in Maryland, there is a writing and a science exam, but we just didn't take it in.
For TUTA districts, we don't, TUTA districts pretty much stick with ELA and math correct.
Yes, in fact, when TUTA started in 2002, I believe, it was just reading, and then math was added in 2003. So the TUTA program that we've been a part of since 2009 is just reading and math.
So, and, and part of that, part of the decision to become a TUTA district, even though it was made prior to my coming, even the first time, was because the TUTA districts really are our peer districts in terms of population. And so we have focused on the TUTA, because it is our way of gauging our movement in one way, against peers and peer districts. And so that has been the, that is, you know.
It was one of the few means we have for comparing ourselves, really nationally.
Over time.
And, and across years.
Thanks, I didn't understand that, I appreciate that. I just, you know, I agree, it's, these are sobering, and this morning's Sun Paper, you know, I, the quote from Dr. Santalisa's, I think, echoes the sentiment of the board, and that this highlights the urgency of the work we've signed on to approve, or to do through the blueprint, with a laser-like focus on literacy, and, and I'm hopeful that when we go into the budget process, we'll be able to look at our budget and see how we're allocating resources to address the, that particular priority. The article also notes that we have made a decision through our leadership choices to really focus, this current board, to really focus on academic side of the house. We've looked at a lot of other things over the years, whether it's buildings, or funding formulas, or autonomy, and this and that and the other, and that's all good, but at the end of the day, the academic side of the house has to carry the load, and, and it really matters. The other things all matter, but it sort of reaffirms the need to double down. Commissioner Bundima?
I just want to, coming to the board as a higher education educator, and really getting better and, and a great insight on K through 12, I'm, I'm, you know, some things for me overlaps into both sides. And what I really appreciate is looking at these charts, and, and, and what, as a person that works with students, both of us, doing dissertations and projects of all sorts, it really is a good indicator of what we really have to do. And I, the first thing that pops in my mind is looking at the programs in other, other cities and states, where they're the leaders in math and, and reading, and asking the question, what is it that they're doing to get to stay at that level? And what comes to my mind is looking at, as a grant writer, looking at the grants and programs that's going on around the country, like the Gates Foundation and all these other programs. Are these people receiving big-time grants to work with their students, and, and, and to hold on to those high levels of scores? And what is it that we can do, or maybe what we should be doing is visiting, and I'm sure you do this all the time, to visit these schools and school districts, and, and kind of copy behind what they're doing to, to assist us in getting to where we need to be? Because it's, it takes more than just what we're doing, it's obviously, this is going to take a lot of projects. And I'm really, a real good qualitative or quantitative study, I don't know, that would be helpful in getting in there and trying to add more opportunities to our kids, other than what we're doing, because we're doing a whole lot. But obviously, somebody's doing more than what we're doing, because I really think we, we, our kids can, we can do it, but we, and it takes a lot of funding, we know that, but, but there's something going on somewhere else that we need to, to go in there and, and find out what they're doing, and copy behind what they're doing. And I think this, we need to, if we were doing studies, we need to do more.
No, and, and Commissioner Bundima, I just want to thank you for that, because part of what we have done as a district, and what we remain committed to do is learning, and it's interesting you said that, because we are part of learning networks that include a number of the districts that you see here, and that's exactly the question. And as a credit to Chief Conley and Chief Davis, their willingness and posture to go beyond the state of Maryland. And this has been some of our, frankly, conversations with the State Department, that while we respect MSD, when we look at the, the other states that have similar populations and other districts that are moving, quite frankly, we need a national level of collaboration. And so we have a slew of national partners who are experts in literacy. We consulted the state of Louisiana about their curriculum, because they have actually seen gains. We worked with, our literacy folks are very close with the folks in Hillsborough County, right? So, so a lot of our peers, while yes, we can learn from folks in state, we learned very early, and I learned even as a CAO, when we were at least on a somewhat upward trajectory, it still was not where we needed to be, that all that we need to know does not reside here. The talent we need is here. And so what this is about is how do we cross-pollinate, so that we are giving our folks here the opportunity to learn? And a great example of that is that the teachers, Baltimore City Public School teachers, who were part of, and are part of our ELA adoption, under the leadership of Chief Conley, had the opportunity to meet with national experts in literacy. So they had phone calls with people like Lisa Del Pitt. They had phone calls with, and, and conference calls with, I'm sorry, who else, Sean? You jump in.
Mr. Lieben and Ms. Dukes.
That's right. So like, people like Nell Dukes, and people like Dr. Lieben, right? People who have actually done this work in the field, in addition to our colleagues in other districts. And so, you know, to the point, and I think something the board should be very proud of, and, and not so much necessarily with me, but I think what the board should be proud of is the fact that this board has said that the fulcrum of improved student achievement has to be a focus, right, on, on how kids learn. And that includes taking into account whole-child pieces, like we saw earlier. There are kids who are not going to come to math class because of math. They're going to come to math class because they are engaged in squash, and they have other young people that are engaged in squash. And we did a total revamping of our curriculum, because I'm just going to be forthright. One of the things that we saw, that we heard from teachers about why this is stagnant, frankly, you know, the Council of Great City, the Council of Great City Schools held a conference call, and we got to speak with the, the leaders at NAEP. And they showed that this is not about whether this is a digital test. I will say on record, because I'm only responsible for Baltimore City, I think that's a cop-out. Any state, any district that wants to point to a digital platform as, as the reason why these scores are where they are, it's a cop-out. And so part of what we have said is it is about the level of questioning that kids are getting. And when we looked at our curriculum, again, we got outside folks with outside pair of eyes to look at our curriculum. One of the things they've told us is, yes, we have strong, strong core novels, but the kinds of questions that kids were being asked were not at a high level. And on a test like NAEP, which is not the end-all, to-be-all, but quite frankly, is backing up what I have seen, what Chief Conley has seen, what Chief Davis has seen in classrooms. So I understand testing is not everything, but I got to tell folks, some of these results are backed up in classroom experiences, where we are not asking black, brown, and low-income children to answer the same high-level questions that we are asking other children. And so that's the question. The question is, do we believe in a rigorous curriculum? Do we believe that a plethora of the same kind of extracurricular learning activities that kids in other zip codes in this state get make a difference? And we are saying, I am saying it does, and the data bears it out. None of these TUTA districts, and I can tell you, because I'm on conference calls with many of these superintendents regularly, none of these districts are satisfied with where they are. And, and any leader with their weight in salt knows that we have more work to do. So I, I just want everybody to know that the board's support of an academic focus and a whole-child focus, right, in developing the capacity of educators, is, is where we need to go. And you cannot restructure your way to high student achievement. At the end of the day, the question is going to be, are we going to provide the rigorous curriculum, the support to teachers and school leaders that is required to do this work? This is not the sexy work. People want to move and shift this, they want to move and shift that, when the reality is, at the end of the day, for anybody who's been in a classroom, it is about the day-to-day decisions you make around what kind of learning experiences for kids. And until we, as a nation, grapple with what we know is best practice, and are willing to put our resources behind that, then, then the country's not going to move. So everybody is out now today, trying to come up with excuses about why the data is flat. So since I don't have to report to all of them, I'm telling you that for here, the data is flat, and will be flat until we move on those indicators. That's what this is. And so kudos to the board, kudos to a team of folks. My chiefs don't come to me and tell me fairy tale stories. We walk in schools, in classrooms, and we say, this is why. Because if you don't ask a child a high-level question about a text, if you don't ask them to do independent writing, and everything is fill-in-the-blank, then this is what you get. You don't get kids that are then going to sit in front of you, Commissioner Bundima, and be able to write a doctoral dissertation. You don't get there from fairy dust. You get there from doing the day-to-day hard work of looking at kids and where they are, and adjusting your practice. And it's not sexy. It doesn't make headlines, nobody can win an election off of it. It is the day-to-day, non-sexy work that educators put in every day. And until we get off of this, like fairy dust wheel that we are on, and roll up sleeves, and get in there and do the hard work, we're going to have flat NAEP scores across the country. We're not here, because that's not the trajectory we're on. But I think we all need to kind of wake up and smell the coffee, and stop trying to come up with excuses about why this data's flat. come up with excuses about why this data's flatlined. We know why the data's flatlined.
So, thank you. It argues for, we've signed up for something, we want to capture appropriately in the budget, we want to hold people accountable along the way, but we're going to have to stay the course a few years here, because this, what we don't need is constant change, two years from now, another new curriculum, three years from now, another math curriculum, four years from now, so let's sign on, let's get this, let's sign on and agree to something reflected in the budgets, so we can, everybody knows what they're looking at. Stability, stability, ma- so the board, I think boards come and go, but we've got, the board members come and go, but we've got, we, we should start laying, we, we are laying the foundation for a set of priorities. We need to hold our leadership accountable along the way, but we've going to have to land on some, a, a set of decisions that we're going to stay the course, and expect the community to, to hold us accountable too. But until, if we've, if we're making a bet on leadership, whole child, and literacy, then let's give the bet a chance to pay off before we declare it fails, and change it to something else, because we'll never know.
As the answer, if the effect of it, um, is a lot on the following year, or what do you think, uh, you would do?
So-
Definitions of, of, of successful vary, is all I will say. So let's have a real discussion with real data.
Fair enough, but it's, it's not as, it's more complicated than meets the eye.
It is far more complicated.
But that's the kind of dialogue, that's exactly the kind of dialogue we need to have, if people have questions about results, if people have questions about curriculum, ask them, because we want to constantly stay on that focus. That's where we need to focus. Okay, having said that, I'm going to share with you, the next time we're all going to be together, and, um, and thank you for hanging in there with us. Uh, Operations Committee will be in this room at 10:00 a.m., I'm going to, thank you, I'm sorry Shane, and, and thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you guys.
Nice job, nice job for a quick turnaround.
I was very well behaved till the end, Shane. I really was.
And you were not unwell, you know?
I know, that's what we want to bring it.
So, um, nice turnaround by the OAA team. Uh, Operations Committee will be in this room at 10:00 a.m. on the 17th. Policy Committee will be in this room at 3:30 on the 17th. P-CAB will be in this room at 6:30 on the 19th. We will all be back for the board meeting on the 24th. And, I'm sorry. And Teaching and Learning, uh, it's first time, it's new meeting time, public comment will be added, kind of a big banner waiver flag on that. Tuesday, May 1st at 3:30. Anything helps for the good of the whole.
This, this week is, uh, National Assistant Principals Week, so if there are any assistant principals watching, or if you all know of any assistant principals, please thank them for the, the amount of work that they're doing. This has been a week designated by, I believe, the National Association of Secondary School Principals and Elementary School Principals, so let's recognize our assistant principals for their hard work. And Commissioner Bondima has a birthday.
Yeah!
So we want to say happy birthday to Commissioner Bondima again.
Happy birthday. Thank you.
That's definitely going to be the last word. Thank you very much, everybody. Um, a motion to adjourn?
Don't get so much.
I'm not going to hit myself. So moved, moved by Commissioner Hassan, uh, second, Commissioner Canham, all in favor, uh, McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Canham, Kashani, Berkeley, Richardson, everybody's in favor of going home. Meeting is-
Adjourned at eight, adjourned at 8:41 p.m.
Commissioner McFadden, I am, I can't believe I forgot that, up until the end. You had my back. I'm going to tweet it out, though, I'm going to tweet it out. Break up for it.
Yeah, forgot. But thanks for the call, folks.
Louisiana.